We're ready to resume the meeting. If I have everybody's attention? Thank you. So Lori will read the next letter into the record.
Dear zoning board members, we recently purchased effective 5621, the home at 275 Hummingbird Lane in the South Butte residential area. Just two weeks later, on 52321, the Montana Standard published an article about the Basin Creek Solar Project proposed on 1,600 acres of John McDermott's ranchland that abuts our new property. Upon learning of the project's massive scythe scope, panic set in and we immediately began researching its potential impacts. We are brand-new Montana residents, having both grown up in Western Washington, just north of Seattle. We had been called to the wide-open spaces of Montana for years, but the recent radical political climate around Seattle forced us to leave our home and realize our dream. We selected the home in Hummingbird largely because of the expansive prairie land surrounding us, home to elk and pronghorn herds, and the spectacular views of the Continental Divide. We could not wait to watch them and send pictures to our family back on the coast. How utterly devastated we were to learn of the proposed blight on this beautiful prairie and the obvious negative impact on the value and desirability of our new home. Where to begin? First, we also support renewable green energy under the right circumstances. However, green energy has many costs that are often overlooked. While solar power seems wonderful as a concept, it brings many massive environmental concerns, especially in this location. The most troubling issue for us is the potential damage to Little Basin Creek, which runs right through the middle of this proposed project. Our research quickly revealed how toxic chemicals leach into the ground due to a variety of causes, including panels damaged by hail and natural disasters, improper disposal of wastewater created both in the manufacturing process and after periodic required cleaning, and worst of all, careless dumping of obsolete panels into landfills, or worse. Solar panels have a current life expectancy of 20 years, if not subject to wild fluctuations in temperature. In Butte's climate, these panels will more likely only last 10 to 12 years. Because recycling the parts is very labor-intensive and expensive due to the toxic chemicals inside, most companies pile their tons of plastic debris that will never break down into landfills. These often truck the debris to other areas and would need to in a city the size of Butte. This also increases the carbon footprint of this green energy. Most companies are not held responsible for cleanup 10 to 20 years after installation, and many of those companies have changed hands or gone bankrupt by then. Anyway, passing the financial and ecological burden onto government and taxpayers, see Forbes, if solar panels are so clean, why do they produce so much toxic waste? The current solar panel manufacturing process should also be considered, as the seven largest solar panel manufacturers are based in China. More specifically, as Politico recently reported, most photovoltaic cells originate in the region that has gained worldwide infamy for Chinese government violations of urgent human rights. Companies and families eager to do their part for the environment are realizing that their solar panels may be the fruit of forced labor. Equally concerning in China's well-documented disregard for environmental protections, devastatingly summarized by the quote from the True Cost of Chinese Solar Panels Alliance for American Manufacturing, artificially-cheap Chinese solar panels are seized upon in the American market as an opportunity to widely deploy and install solar across the U.S. in a push for renewable energy. But these solar panels are clearly produced at the expense of workers, communities, and the environment. The result, in an attempt to decrease our dependency on carbon-intensive energy, the U.S. has offshore pollution and the burdens that come with it to communities in China who do not have the same liberties as U.S. citizens do to organize and demand enforcement, let alone creation of public environmental protections. Is this the path to a less carbon-intensive future that Americans should endorse and build upon? Closer to home, we have been watching and listening with keen interest to the evolving Superfund Restoration Project related to Butte's historic mining. Wouldn't it be sadly ironic to lay the groundwork for a future Superfund project after introducing lead, cadmium, and other toxins, also referenced in the same Forbes article noted above, into this pristine creek and prairie? Lead poisoning causes kidney nerve system and brain damage, to name a few, and affects children at a higher rate because their immune systems are weaker. Cadmium builds up in the kidneys and can lead to kidney failure. It is also a known carcinogen. A solar farm of this size would also clearly affect wildlife, as aside from the proposed small green strip adjacent to the creek, the resident elk and pronghorn populations would be effectively cut off from freely moving in a north-south direction. They may have narrow walkways between panels, but no real grazing space. Historical wildlife corridors would be obliterated. Part of the solar farm proposal mentions being the second-largest farm in the U.S. Why would Butte need to have the second-largest farm in the U.S.? What are the environmental and public health costs of this distinction? It is common knowledge that solar arrays and farms should be installed close to where they will be used. The proposed farm is three times the size needed to power Butte. Do we need to take on the toxins and future thousands of tons of debris to power other cities that are many miles away? Further, this is a residential area that would need to be reclassified as light industrial. Why? When people buy homes in a clearly residential rural area, there is never the fear of having some type of industrial complex built right next door. Some people choose a more urban location where industry coexists with residency. Certainly, there must be an already industrial zone spot that would better house a project such as this, a site where the land has already been disturbed and ecosystems long ago abandoned. Why destroy and contaminate an unblemished and ever-shrinking habitat? Whenever we cross over into Montana, refrains the song "Home on the Range" and "America the Beautiful" pop into our heads. We have looked forward to embracing those intangible, glorious gifts, big sky, wide-open spaces. Prairies where the deer and the antelope play and the purple mountain majesties surround us. Butte has it all, everything not found in the crowded, polluted, or often ugly big cities. Solar farms are a visual blight resembling massive swaths of pavement, like runways at large airports. Below are photos that they provided of the Australian solar farm that generates 3-hanger megawatts. A photo of their location of their home and showing their facility, a final photo that uses the applicant's boundary and then identifies where their property is. As much of our property will be impacted, imagine those neighbors that would be at the same level as the reportedly 12-foot-high panels on the north end of this project. Seems horrible, unfair for a variety of reasons, not the least is the impact on all of the surrounding neighbors' property values through no fault of their own. Does Mr. McDermott propose to commission a study of how much value will be lost and compensate the surrounding owners accordingly? The Montana Standard article so stated, Mr. McDermott doesn't mind the look of solar. It's clean energy, it's kind of the future. Perhaps he is simply unaware of just how unclean solar energy truly is when considered in its totality. We are fierce supporters and defenders of private property rights and believe Mr. McDermott has a right to use his ranch as he sees fit within reasonably-accepted environmental and zoning guidelines. However, no private property owner has an unfettered right to infringe upon another property owner's right to enjoy their property. We believe all the neighbors support clean energy as we do. Many homeowners install panels on their roofs or in their yards, enough to power their homes with minimal environmental impact. Solar energy is still in its infancy, and it's currently a spacehog, clearly demonstrated by the Australian photo. Before 1,600-acre black plastic blanket is slapped onto the precious creek-fed prairie in a solely residential area, maybe some better alternatives should be considered. We are encouraged by the board's recent rejection of a similarly out-of-place, five-acre battery farm over three times smaller than the Basin Creek proposal that was proposed in the Blacktail Canyon Residential Area, Butte, closer to I-90. Thank you very much for your time and consideration, Holly and Keith Brown. There's enclosures of articles that were mentioned in their letter. To the zoning board of Butte Silver Bow County, I have proudly called Montana my home for nearly 19 years. My husband and I have had two children that were born in Butte. 10 years ago, we found the property of our dreams on Little Basin Creek Road. We have llamas, chickens, dogs, and cats. We wake up and sit on our deck and enjoy seeing new elk babies being born and male deer fawns playing. We have had grouse in our yard and bluebirds nesting in boxes. We never plan on leaving, this is our home. We both work in the medical field, myself with Dr. Pullman for 19 years and my husband at St. James Hospital. We are committed to Butte, and this is why we are 100% against building a solar farm adjacent to our westward property border. This solar farm will decrease the home values directly surrounding it. My husband and I have invested in our property and home for over 10 years now. It does not seem appropriate that our property and many others would depreciate to benefit a solar farm that the owners have admitted will only provide eight to 10 full-time jobs. The proposed solar farm will literally be at our back fence. It is planned to have over 700 solar panels on 1,600 acres. This land is rightfully zoned for agricultural and residential use. There are hundreds of animals that roam these parts, and the corridor they proposed is not adequate. These animals require large areas with great amount of native grasses. Grass requires sagebrush for their habitat. A corridor will not be enough. As noted above, the proposed solar farm is estimated to be over 700,000 panels. According to Construction Review of April 2021, this will make it the third-largest solar farm in the U.S. The only two larger would be the Solarstar Farm in California and the Topaz Solar in California. If you look at the landscape, these farms are located in desert, not native beautiful grasses with homes around them. In preparation for the solar farm, the 1,600 acres will be bulldozed, and all the native grasses, plants, and trees will be destroyed. This will recreate significant dust and dust storms making visibility a nightmare during our windy days, which are numerous. I also ask how the solar farm property would be reclaimed once the 25-year lease is up. The company will also be granted a 15-year property tax reduction, therefore it will have little benefit for the property taxes of Butte Silver Bow residents. In addition, please ask yourself why this has to be so enormous. I feel this is to befit one company in town with owners that live outside of Butte. From what I can deduce, the extra energy will be sold to outside states. As Mr. Washington said in the paper, "I want it all." I do not feel that is the right attitude when it comes to Montana or Butte. I plead with you all that you decline the zoning for the planned solar farm between Little Basin Creek and Basin Creek. In my opinion, this is one of the most beautiful areas of Butte. The solar farm would be better suited for an area zoned for industry. I thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Erin Williams Lieber. And there are some photos within which of the letter that you have in your packet. To whom it may concern, I am a concerned property owner located at 570 Little Basin Creek Road that is opposed to the solar panel farm that is proposed in the area. There is absolutely ridiculous -- I'm sorry, this is an absolutely ridiculous location to place a project that does nothing for Butte and will completely destroy the wildlife ecosystem. 1,600 acres of wildlife destroyed by 700,000, blinding, skin-scorching, wildlife-killing solar panels will be installed, all for profit that will benefit no one except for non-Montanans. Please do not allow something like this to happen, the area's beautiful land that does not deserve out-of-state money and lower property value, especially the type that kills wildlife. Sincerely, Eric and Sheri Johnson. To zoning board of adjustment, the purpose of this letter is to oppose the giant 1,600-acre solar project in South Butte Little Basin Creek area. This project would not only be unsightly, but it would be detrimental to the wildlife that depend on this habitat. People too need the healing power of nature's beauty for their spiritual and physical well-being, especially after the one-plus year of the pandemic and state of the country's unrest and division. Please consider my opposition to this solar project, as well as the opposition of others. I appreciate the opportunity to reach out to the board. Sincerely, Margaret Cassidy, 2921 Harvard Avenue. To whom it may concern, it is my understanding that there is a proposed change in zoning for Basin Creek Solar Project by Madison Valley Equity LLC. The proposal seeks the 1,600-acre, 700,000-panel solar array to South Butte and thus requests an exception to the current zoning of R1-S to accommodate this industrial use. I am adamantly opposed to this change in zoning into the solar array. The zoning ordinance, R1-S, found in Title 17.08 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, is intended primarily to provide for the transition of large, sparsely-settled areas from rural to agricultural characteristics to urban-one-family resident use, and to provide protecting residential development, which requires a compelling public necessity, per the code of 17.52.010 to rezone. This project does not meet that standard, specifically it's a private venture intended to power a corporate, holding at the expense of property values, wildlife habitat, and ecological diversity. Item A of the criteria for considering any special-use permit application specifies that consideration shall be given to the location, character, and natural features of the property. This project will have clear and quantifiable adverse effects, including complete ecological destruction of the area, long-term constant noise pollution associated with a massive multi-year construction project, and a decrease in property values due to the aforementioned. The character of the surrounding community and neighborhoods, not to mention natural features, will be irretrievable, horrible, scarred, and affected. Additionally, there has been no similar change permitted to the surrounding land uses since the original adoption of the ordinance. The proposed fencing and landscaping will destroy vegetation and topography, which in turn will destroy wildlife ecosystems in the area. Items D and E, including obviously affecting natural movement of large game, which in turn could reasonably have a direct negative effect on the economic advantages accruing to Butte Silver Bow during hunting seasons. The lightning and reflective properties of solar arrays will create well-documented nuisances in the surrounding areas for miles. Item H and I. Reclassification for purposes of this private enterprise will fail to enhance or promote the comprehensive development of the immediate neighborhood and community. Item M, which will in turn adversely affect nearby properties and their families. Item Q. In sum, this project is objectively not compatible with the existing neighborhood and will radically change its character and natural features to the detriment of future development of the community. Furthermore, the corporate entity behind this project has not demonstrated that this effort will have long-lasting positive effects on our community. Only eight permanent jobs are projected to be the outcome of this development, and the surplus energy that is not used by the data center will be sold back to the grid for profit by Northwestern Energy. There is no indication that this project will benefit Butte Silver Bow or its citizens at large, let alone the families living in this neighborhood. The proposed destruction of our neighborhood character, property values, and wildlife habitat is unjustified by any measure. I strongly request the Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board oppose the proposed special and/or conditional use permit for the Basin Creek Solar Project and work with the developers to cite the project in a more appropriate location. Sincerely, Jeffrey E. Stevenson, Ph.D., 197 Dry Bean Road, Butte, Montana. Zoning board members, on behalf of the Little Basin Creek Volunteer Fire Company, its members and the community which we serve, we are in opposition to the Atlas Solar Project. The Atlas Solar Project will need to wire the solar panels in a manner that lethal levels of voltage and amperage will be present if trying to fight a fire in the vicinity of the solar panels. During a structure fire, before we start to put water on the fire, we must turn off the electricity to the structure, as not doing so can cause injury and/or death to the firefighters due to electrocution. Water and electricity don't mix. These solar panels cannot be turned off, as can electricity, just structures can. So any firefighter would be exposed to dangerous levels of electrical power. In addition to the electrical dangers, if a vegetation fire under the solar panel happens, or the solar panels themselves were burning, toxic gases would be released that would not allow firefighters to enter the area. Also, any homes near the burning solar panels would need to be evacuated due to the deadly toxic gases. At this point, a fire among these solar panels will only be fought by stopping the spread of the fire at a road or other fire line, instead of putting firefighters in harm's way of lethal electrical levels and toxic gas levels, not directly near the solar panels. Due to the above reasons, the Little Basin Creek Volunteer Fire Company opposes this project and the rezoning of the area. Sincerely, Jim Ross, Chief. Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board, I am opposed to any zoning that would allow the Basin Creek Solar Project to proceed. I live in the area and would much rather see green grass and cows than fields of solar panels. Charles E. Beeler, 481 Little Basin Creek Road. To whom it may concern, I am opposed to the proposed location of the Basin Creek Solar Project that is affiliated with Atlas Power on the Gosden McDermott Cattle Ranch Company. This area is zoned as single-family suburban residential and should primarily remain as such. My points of contention are: It reduces grazing land for raising beef cattle as a source of our food supply. The area is a near-drought status. We cannot spare the water sources needed for maintenance of this solar project. How will the 700,000 panels be disposed of when they are no longer in use? How long will it take to reclaim the 1,600 acres from sterile soil back to green? Part of the access to these panels will be through Little Basin Creek Road. Damage will be done to our recycled paved road by heavy equipment for this project. There will be lost revenue to Butte Silver Bow by reducing available land for residential use. Removal of vegetation and heat generated by the solar panels will cause a change to weather patterns. weather patterns. It will totally take away wildlife habitat for elk, deer and antelope that depend on this ground for their winter range. Plus, this will disturb a food source for the endangered species, wolves that depend on the wildlife and livestock for their survival. Butte deserves better. Sincerely, Mary J. McLaughlin, five eighty Little Basin Creek Road and Jerry McLaughlin, five eighty Little Basin Creek Road. Members of the board, my name is Gary McWharter. I live at twenty-two hundred Skyway Avenue in Butte. I am also a landowner in the Basin Creek area. To begin with, I am adamantly opposed to this massive project. There are a number of reasons for my opposition. The proposed project is stated to be three hundred million watt installation and assuming state of the art solar panels rated at approximately four hundred to four hundred and twenty watts. This would require between seven hundred and nine hundred thousand panels. How are these to be arrayed? Will they be in rows or will they cover the landscape similar to photos I have seen of massive solar farms in places like India? How much ground disturbance will there be? Will there be potential issues with dust abatement and stormwater pollution to the Basin Creek? Once installed and producing power, how will the output of these panels be collected together? Will there be one or more collector substations? In order to get some of the power to a collector or collector site, will there be numerous power lines crossing of Basin Creek? Will these be buried? Who will monitor the potential consequences of underwater power line installations? Once the power is accumulated, collected together, how will it be interconnected with Northwestern's transmission grid? Will there be a high voltage overhead power lines? In addition to these iss- issues, rumor has it that a twelve-foot tall security fence will be installed. Will this be around the entire sixteen hundred acres? How would that benefit the wildlife in the area? Beyond these issues, I have concerns of the viability of this project and how it will benefit Butte Silver Bow. According to information I was able to view, our average amount of sunshine is approximately eight hours per day. The output of the solar panel is dependent upon solar radiation, which is at a maximum about four hours per day. Based on that, this farm would produce three hundred megawatts only four hours a day. By comparison, I visited the NCAT installation and viewed an information sheet delineating this was a fifty kilowatt site that produced some sixty-six thousand seven hundred kilowatt hours of power per year. At three hundred and sixty-five days per year and fifty kilowatt output, this computes to three point six hours of utilization per day, which verifies data I found on the internet. The project is estimated to cost approximately two hundred and fifty thousand. I believe at least ninety percent of that amount will go to China for steel and solar panels. In all likelihood, the project will be awarded a non-union out-of-town contractor who will bring in non-union construction forces. Again, how would that benefit not only Butte Silver Bow but the U.S. as well? My further question is, how is power produced fire hours per day beneficial? How does that lessen Northwestern's energies needs for more, for other more traditional and reliable plants? Atlas and crypto mining touted this to serve their load. Are they shutting down sixteen to twenty hours per day? I think not, and their attempt to use Northwestern Energy as a storage site is either disingenuous or ignorant of power systems. Once they sell sell power to Northwestern Energy, it disappears and any future power they purchase back from Northwestern Energy has no connection to what they produced and sold. It will come from an entirely different source. Currently, the Basin Creek area is zoned residential. It is a very scenic area to drive through on the way to the Basin Creek Reservoir Park. This solar installation would forever visually devastate the area to serve no purpose. Furthermore, I have to question what this will do to property values. I think they will go down as I don't believe people will want this type of facility in their backyard. I question if any alternatives have been considered. For example, the Tifford area out by the Asme plant is already zoned industrial. Why wouldn't that be a better location if, in fact, it is to be built? Does the impact of the facility warrant its approval given the minimal power output? I'm sorry, but I don't see any name associated with this one.
Said it was, uh, the top, it said it was Mr. McWharter.
Oh, okay.
The initial paragraph.
We are entering our, we are entering our firm opposition to this project. If it were truly to be good for Butte Silver Bow, we would be active supporters. The people that live out here have been a great taxpayers for BSB through their investment of their homes and properties. This project will devalue all of our properties. Not only does this project involve sixteen hundred acres along the Basin Creek Road, traveled by all that live out here, it would also be seen by most of the citizens of Butte. This will destroy our rural area and will be offset in the north by the pit. We seriously believe that the power generated by this project will be used in total by MRI and the mining of Bitcoin in the industrial park. Butte residents will receive zero benefit. And this is from, um... Hayman is their last name. Mr. and Mrs. Cortland and Carol Barney of three forty-five Herman Gulch Road. This one is from Ann DeMelo St. Pierre of eleven seventeen West Broadway Street. Dear Lori, please make sure this makes it to the meeting. I oppose to the solar farm for cryptocurrency business. I'm writing the letter as a concerned Butte residents in regard to the proposed solar farm to be built south of Butte for the cryptocurrency business. There are so many reasons why this should not happen, and it would be an abomination to our beautiful community. It will be an eyesore in our beautiful area. It will destroy the habitat of animals that help make our area so amazing. It will reduce grazing for the cattle. The hum of these solar panels will cause a good amount of noise pollution for the nearby residents. Those residents did not buy that beautiful property to have to listen to that. Possible issues with our flight patterns, incoming and outgoing flights, not to mention potential glare danger for the pilots. This area should remain zoned as residential only. In doing so, this will help to ensure bringing more families to the area, which will in turn bring more long-term job opportunities to the area. Job opportunities that will not damage the very reason we live here in the first place. This solar farm will offer minimal jobs and is not worth all the damage it will do. This proposal is going to do nothing good for our community, only line the pockets of the cryptocurrency business. I vote no. Dear zoning board of adjustment, we are writing this letter concerning the recent proposal to issue a special use permit to the Gosden McDermott Cattle Company, Cara John McDermott, to construct a photovoltaic power generation facility in our west zone located between Little Basin and Basin Creek Roads, south of the industrial park. We urge the Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board to stick to their mission of protecting property against developments that do not meet the original zoning criteria. This is the purpose of different zoning classifications to be given with. New developments should be required to operate in the appropriate zoning classification of which they were intended. This proposal would be an exceptionally poor use of the proposed land because of the massive size and complexity of this project. Its footprint would be more massive and noticeable than the open pit mining on the Butte landscape. It would not only affect the proposed property but also the surrounding area from future economic growth and tax revenues as this property would be essentially locked up for an extended period of time. This area is some of the best open space that the Butte economy has for future expansion. Power from the project is being proposed to be marketed elsewhere via the electrical grid. This cannot happen without the necessary infrastructure in place to support this concept. This would involve substations of the appropriate size, transmission lines, et cetera, to handle a mass of three hundred megawatt of power. Contracts, agreements and permitting would need to be in place, and the likelihood of being competitive in this market are very slim, especially when you take into account the efficiency of this project during the short days of winter and other logistical considerations having to do with our location and weather. We therefore urge the zoning board of adjustment to stick to their mission and take these factors into consideration and deny this request until a better location. Proposal that addresses these issues can be worked out. Sincerely yours, Butte Citizens for Butte.
So the next letter was submitted several copies. The author addressed one to each board member, and I'm only going to read one of them because they're exactly the same. Dear Mr. Wing, the purpose of this letter is to register my opposition to the location of the proposed sixteen hundred acre Basin Creek Solar Project directly adjacent to my five hundred and forty acre ranch to the north of Mr. McDermott's property. Sweet Meadows Ranch has been in my family for five generations and along with the McDermott property may be amongst the last large landholding south of Butte. As one of the last remaining bastions of open space in the county, it would be a shame to see this part of the beautiful Summit Valley with its native grasslands replaced with over seven hundred thousand solar panels. The two point five square miles encompassing the proposed solar project is zoned residential and should remain as such to accommodate future population growth in Butte Silver Bow. I am unopposed to solar projects in general, but I am opposed to this project, this proposed project because of the principal beneficiary of the three hundred megawatts of power generated by the solar facility would be Atlas Power Data Center and its cryptocurrency facilities. Once Atlas Power consumes its annually permitted seventy-five megawatts of power, the remainder goes to the grid to be used anywhere. Northwestern Energy could bid on that power, but considering their reluctance to use solar energy because of its sporadic nature, the power would most likely be sent out of state through Northwestern's transmission lines, resulting in no green energy available for the city of Butte. Much as it, much has been written both positive and negative about the current use of cryptocurrency as a worldwide medium of exchange. Unless Atlas Power can demonstrate that the influx of millions of dollars in outside investment and high-paying technology jobs will materialize and come to our town through its planned expansion, I shall remain skeptical of its benefit to the Butte community. Presently, I view cryptocurrency mining as a vast waste of computing power and no energy, no matter the source of the energy, all while serving as a windfall for speculators and a way to move large sums of money without government interference. I respectfully request that the zoning board, upon assessing my reasons for opposing the aforementioned proposed solar project, they consider denying the application for the special use permit by the Basin Creek Solar Project. Thank you for your time. Bonnie B. Yo.
To whom it may concern, my name is Holly Yo Lagerquist. I write this letter on behalf of my spouse, Russ Lagerquist, and me to register our opposition to a proposed change in zoning for the Basin Creek Solar Project by Madison River Equity LLC. Russ and I reside on my mother Bonnie Yo's five hundred and forty acre ranch that is directly adjacent to the north of Mr. John McDermott's property. My husband and I own five acres amongst the five hundred and forty acres of my mom's. Russ and I built our home in two thousand and four on Sweet Meadows Ranch so that we could help my parents operate the ranch. It was a dream that came true. Russ and I intended to continue to help in the operation of Sweet Meadows Ranch. The ranch is a fifth-generation ranch and has been in our family for a hundred and thirty years. We'd like it to remain this way and to become sixth-generation family ranch. The McDermott property and Sweet Meadows Ranch may be amongst the last large holding south of Butte. It would be devastating to witness the breathtaking part of Summit Valley with its native grasses to be overtaken by over seven hundred thousand solar panels. Mr. McDermott's property is zoned as residential and should remain as such to help support, accommodate and establish the future population growth of Butte, Montana. We support solar projects and green energy in general, but we strongly oppose this project because of the principal beneficiary of the three hundred megawatts generated by the solar facility would be Atlas Power and Madison River Equity LLC. As soon as Atlas Power consumes its annually permitted seven hundred, or seventy-five megawatts of power, the remainder goes to the grid to be utilized anywhere. It's my understanding that Northwestern Energy could bid on this power, but with their hesitance to use solar energy due to its sporadic nature, that may not be the case. The power would most likely be sent out of state interests through Northwestern's transmission lines, resulting in no green energy available for Butte residents. There has been much written lately, both supporting and opposing the use of cryptocurrency as a worldwide medium of exchange. Unless Atlas Power can demonstrate that the influx of millions of dollars in outside and high-paying technology jobs will materialize and come to Butte through its planned expansion, Russ and I will remain doubtful as to its benefits to the citizens of Butte. No other use of computing capabilities of the new graphics processing units by Atlas Power other than cryptocurrency mining has been fully or adequately explained to our satisfaction. Furthermore, there is no indication that this project will benefit Butte Silver Bow, such as the destruction of neighborhood character, ranch lands, property values and wildlife is justified. Russ and I respectfully request that the Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board oppose the proposed special and/or conditional use permit for the Basin Creek Solar Project and work with the developers to cite the project in a more appropriate industrial location. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Holly Yo Lagerquist and Russell Lagerquist. One forty Sweet Meadows Road, Butte, Montana.
To whom it may concern, my name is Dr. David Merrick. I moved my family here in August of twenty twenty to work, become part of the community and to hopefully retire here in Butte. After retiring from ranching and becoming, being a counselor for the majority of my life, my wife and I made the decision to move and to work toward our retirement in the community in which we wanted to retire. My wife being a physician and with me continuing with my counseling practice, we had the opportunity to move almost anywhere in the world. After visiting many places, we fell in love with Butte, the community, the nature, the views and the strong, Butte-strong attitude we saw and heard about. We took all of our savings and purchased some land and a home on Wapiti Mountain Road at the end of Little Basin Creek Road. We have not only invested our finances in Butte, we have invested our lives here. We moved twenty-three hundred miles from the south to find a new great place to call home, have a sixteen-year-old that was uprooted to a new school and has grown to love even in these hard times with COVID. Our home is Butte. We may not have been born here or raised here, but we have chosen to live here. After moving here, I immediately hired an architect to add on to our home to increase our ability not to only enjoy what nature has to offer around us, our views, but to have space to create many memories with our neighbors and friends. We have grown to love overlooking the east ridge, the highlands, but some of our most favorite views are overlooking the south end of the Butte Valley and the city. The herds of elk, antelope and even the bald eagles in the proposed area have been amazing for our community to enjoy. The open pasture land is cattle, and cattle are so peaceful to view and important historically. The noise and light pollution is to a minimum at this point, and our city is great. Being a rancher, I am in support of taking care of our environment and finding new ways to create sustainable energy. Believe it is our duty to maintain and take care of our environment and our community's resources. However, I also strongly believe that we are not to do that at the detriment of our community, the environment, the wildlife that calls Butte home. I believe that this project is to the detriment of our community. It deeply breaks my heart that we, we as a community are even having this discussion knowing that we know about this project and how little is being shared with the community at large. I attended the developers' meeting, requested specific information and have yet to receive anything now weeks later. Butte does not need another eyesore, nor people from outside this community making profits off of Butte. In my opinion, this project will destroy the beauty of our community for current and future generations. The visual and auditory disturbances to the community will be devastating. While buying our home and choosing where to live, we looked over the community and zoning around our immediate neighborhood and even views. We wanted to manage our money and purchase what we had dreamed of. Sadly, at this point, I have stopped all progress in making our dream home to see what happens with this solar project. If in fact this project is approved, we will move. I believe that this project will keep great people from moving here that will have a lot to offer Butte and surrounding areas. This letter is not only to strongly voice my concern about the project for me and my family, but also for the people of Butte who have no idea of the negative impact that this will have on our community, our city and our county. I'm writing this letter as written opposition to a proposed change in zoning for the Basin Creek Solar Project by Madison River Equity LLC. I therefore request the zoning board oppose the proposed special and/or conditional use permit for the Basin Creek Solar Project. Sincerely, Robert David Merrick, ten thirty-eight Wapiti Mountain Road. And with that picture was submitted several, or with that letter was submitted several pictures that are in your packet.
Dear zoning board members, I am proud to say I'm a lifetime resident of Butte, Montana. In my thirty years of learning and loving the wonderful things about Butte and my community, I've come to realize that there's one thing that stands above the rest, and that is Butte takes care of Butte. From the days of the Grand Mountain Spectacular Mine Disaster through the years of volunteer work and financial supporting, building the spirit of the Columbia Gardens Carousel, the Lady of the Rockies build, to the most recent outpouring of support since the tragic fire resulting in a total loss of the M and M, the list goes on and on. You can see Butte people have always shown up to lend a helping hand. I'm writing this letter now asking that once again Butte steps up, takes care of their own. The Basin Creek Solar Project with its proposed installation of seven hundred thousand solar panels over a sixteen hundred acre parcel of land, we situated just twenty-five feet from my property line. The panels will fully line- The panels will fully line not one, but two sides of my property, eliminating indescribably gorgeous views. Currently, the majority of my family's time is spent outside enjoying our land grazing out across the landscape as we desire. My husband and I have the opportunity to do this with our two young boys. We get to watch them and get excited, or seeing all the wildlife, and we are privileged to just, to see just outside and sometimes with our own backyard. How fortunate am I to get to do so? The natural uninterrupted scenery, that's what we choose to more firmly plant our roots in the community where we were raised. I want to continue to teach them why we love Montana. We call Butte home, why we cherish the community. I cannot in my heart continue to do that if the looming sea of black encroaches at my back door. I'm not against going green by any means. I do my best in purchasing environmentally friendly products. I teach my children that when we find litter on the ground, we pick it up and we put it in the trash. We leave the land how we found it, or a little cleaner if we have a day in the hills. That said, I am not in, that said, I am not in support of the Basin Creek Solar Project. This is proposed with the intent to support and benefit a small private group of individuals while negatively impacting the surrounding neighbors. This is, is an example of a private company taking advantage of renewable energy mandates and subsidies to reap the benefits for their own personal gains. This is not for the benefit of Butte. I did some research and discovered that the following land types are ideal for solar plants. Brownfields, abandoned mining land, and existing transportation and transmission corridors. These land types are ideal because these lands are, that have pre-existing degradation and loss of habitat that will be further compounded by the addition of a solar plant. The land that boaters mine should not be classified this way. I find myself thinking that the Basin Creek Solar Project is going to have adversely affect the deer, elk, antelope, coyotes, fox, eagles, hawks, bunnies, and badgers, just to name a few. I foresee it impacting their lives more than it will impact mine. This could jeopardize an entire ecosystem. Solar power has its advantages, but not when the plants of this magnitude are built on sixteen-hundred acres of natural uninterrupted pristine land. This is something I feel very passionate about. I greatly appreciate every one of you for taking the time to hear my concerns. I hope you make the right decision in denying the request for a special use permit from the Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board. Thank you. April Parvenin.
Dear members of the zoning board, my name is Kyle Parvenin. I live at two seventy-nine Cotton Tail Lane, a corner lot to the proposed Basin Creek Solar Project. As far as relative distance, my home will be as close to an array as any home around the entire project. My home faces north, and exactly a hundred and ten yards away from my house stands to be seven hundred thousand solar panels facing south directly at me. Put yourself in my position, and you'll see it's the thing of nightmares and the exact reason zoning laws were made in the first place. It does not make my opinion matter any more or less, but I hope it helps you understand my passion about stopping this project. My wife and I were born and raised in Butte. Our parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents, all born and raised in Butte. The reverence, this is instilled in each other and then on to us, the importance of keeping alive and keeping, and the things that keeps generations in a place as great as this. A community, it's so rare and only understood by those who have been able to be a part of it. Community can heal the sick, shelter the homeless, and most importantly, preserve the area the community calls home. Who would know this better than a board of comprised of volunteers donating their own time to protect their fellow citizens? You all reading this because you took it upon yourselves to be in the position to decide on the tough decisions that would affect so many in your community. I now call unto you to take deeply into consideration the residents like myself, my wife, and two small children, who worked hard to move to a beautiful area within our community, now face a proposed industrial destruction on a scale that many can't comprehend. So many stand to lose so much, while some wealthy investors can gain a little bit more by destroying a valley in our own community. Solar farms are not bad. Exploiting them for self-interest of those who fund them is. I implore you to ask yourself, are we the ones to allow a mass industrial development to take over a residential area of our fellow citizens? I honestly believe the generations that made us, that made Butte more than a town, that stopped the wealthy corporations from using our natural resources to line their pockets, I honestly believe they wouldn't allow it to happen again. Now is your time to make them proud.
To whom it may concern, my name is Dr. Susan Merrick. I moved my family here in August of twenty twenty to work, become a part of the community, and to hopefully retire here in Butte. My husband and I made the decision to move and work towards our retirement in the community in which we wanted to retire. I am a physician and my husband has a counseling practice. We had the opportunity to move almost anywhere in the world. After visiting many places, we fell in love with Butte, the community, the nature, the views, and the Butte's strong attitude we saw and heard about. We took all of our savings and purchased some land on a home on Wapiti Mountain Road at the end of Little Basin Creek Road. We were careful to investigate the surrounding neighborhoods and acreage to verify the zoning surrounding our land and home. We have not invested our finances, have not only invested our finances in Butte, we have invested our lives here. We moved twenty-three hundred miles out of the south, from the south to find a new great place to call home. I have a sixteen-year-old son that was uprooted to a new school that has grown to love even in these hard times with COVID. Our home is here in Butte. We may not have been born or raised here, but we have chosen to live here. After moving here, we immediately hired an architect to add to our home to increase our ability not only to enjoy what nature has to offer around us, our views, but to have space to create many memories with our neighborhoods and friends. We have grown to love overlooking the east ridge, the highlands, but some of our most favorite views are looking south end of the Butte Valley and city. The herds of elk, antelope, and even bald eagles in the proposed area have been amazing for our community to enjoy. The open pasture land and cattle are also peaceful to view and important historically. The current zoning districts restricts the usage and ownership of the land on our beautiful drive home and across which our lovely view looks. The noise and light pollution is to a minimum at this point, and our city is great. I am supporting, in support of taking care of our environment and finding new ways to create sustainable energy. However, I believe it is our duty to maintain and take care of our environment and our community, community's resources. I strongly believe that we are not to do that at the detriment of our community, the environment, the wildlife that calls Butte home. Believe this is the project is to the detriment of our community. Changing the zoning of the current proposed site would definitely be to the detriment of our community and the wildlife in the area. Deeply saddens me that we as a community are even having this discussion, knowing that we are about to, this project and how little is being shared with the community at large. We attended the developers' meeting and requested specific information, have yet to receive anything now weeks later. Butte does not need another eyesore, nor people from outside of the community making profits off of Butte. In my opinion, this entire project will destroy the beauty of our community and our current and future generations. The visual and auditory disturbances of the community will be devastating. While we're buying our home and choosing where to live, again, we looked over the community and zoning on our immediate neighborhood and even views. We wanted to manage our money and purchase what we had dreamed of. Sadly, at this point, I have stopped all progress on making our dream home to see what happens with the solar project. There are essentially no benefits of this project to our community. If in fact this project is approved and the zoning is changed, we will move. I believe this project will keep great people from moving here and have a lot to offer Butte and surrounding areas. This letter is not only strongly voiced my concerns about the project for me and my family, but also for the people who have no idea of the negative impact on our community and our city and our county. I'm requesting that you as the zoning committee vote against the change of the zoning in this area. I'm writing this letter as in written opposition to a proposed change in the zoning of Basin Creek Solar Project by Madison River Equity LLC. Therefore, I request the Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board oppose the proposed special and unconditional use for the Basin Creek Solar Project. Sincerely, Susan Merrick. And I apologize that that was the same letter that, the beginning was different.
To whom it may concern, planning and zoning are important to a community. The residents of a town can then make informed choices about what to expect of their chosen neighborhood. There are residential zones and industrial zones created to prevent conflicts. It is exactly this not-in-my-backyard conflict that exists with the proposed Basin Creek Solar Farm. It is important for the planning board to take the view shed into account when approving new projects. We were drawn to live in this area because of the landscape, the views, the wildlife, the quietness of the area. Knowing it was zoned residential contributed to that decision. As stated in the Montana Standard article of three twenty-eight twenty-one, Atlas Energy, AKA Bitcoin Cryptowatt, intends to build eight new buildings full of servers to mine cryptocurrency. This juice-guzzling data center is to be powered by the proposed three hundred megawatt, sixteen-hundred acre, seven hundred thousand unit solar farm. It would not, it would seem appropriate to then build such a grand view, new adventure on an existing industrial site and not obliterate precious green space in exchange for an industrial view. We know of no one who seeks to live next to such a gigantic solar array. A more appropriate site would still afford the energy produced to be put on the grid to feed the endeavors of Atlas Power. It would still employ contractors to build it and would still end up with the required five to ten maintenance employees. We do support solar energy. Ideally, however, the power generated would benefit homeowners in the city estate that it is built in. Seems no such benefit exists with this particular project. To turn a residential green space into a for-profit adventure for the convenience of a handful of entrepreneurs at the dismay of many local residents just seems wrong. Therefore, we are opposed to the proposed location of the Basin Creek Solar Project. Ask the members of the zoning board adjustment to carefully consider this matter. Your decision may set a precedent for the quality of life and desired lifestyle of our city's future. Respectfully, Dave and Carol Lubick.
To whom it may concern, this letter is written in opposition to a proposed change in zoning for the Basin Creek Solar Project by Madison River Equity LLC. The proposal seeks to add a sixteen-hundred acre, seven hundred panel solar array south of Butte and thus requests an exception to the current zoning of the R one S single-family suburban residential to accommodate the industrial use. The zoning ordinance R one S found in title seventeen point oh eight of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code is intended primarily to provide a transition of large sparsely settled areas from rural or agricultural characteristics to urban one-family residence use to provide protecting residential development. In order to rezone this area, there must be a compelling public necessity per BSB MC seventeen fifty-two zero one zero. This project does not meet that standard. It is a private venture intended to power a corporate holding at the expense of property values, wildlife habitat, and ecological diversity. It will have a clear adverse effects, including complete ecological destruction of the area, long-term constant noise pollution associated with a massive multi-year construction project, and a decrease in property values due to the aforementioned. The project is not at all compatible with the existing neighborhood, and it will radically change its character and natural features to the detriment of future development of the community. Furthermore, this project has not demonstrated that it will have long-lasting positive effects on our community. Only eight permanent jobs are projected to be the outcome of this development, and the surplus energy that is not used by the data center will be sold back to the grid for profit. There is no indication that this project will benefit Butte Silver Bow, such as the destruction of neighborhood character, property values, and wildlife habitat is justified. There's a reason why there are zoning restrictions throughout Butte. Once zoning is modified for one entity, it is then setting a precedent for other changes to zoning. Before accepting the exemption to this, please ask, what will this change do to overall requests in the future? Will there be similar requests? Have there been similar requests that we have denied? We therefore request Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board oppose the proposed special and/or conditional use permit for the Basin Creek Solar Project and will work with developers to site the project in a more appropriate industrial location. Sincerely, Paul Blumenthal, twelve seventeen West Patton.
Okay. The next letters were, were very similar or the same to that letter, so I'm just going to read the, the names. If I can't read the names, I'm sorry. Pamela. Pamela and Carl Magnussen. Eight thirteen Herman Galt's Road. Rochelle Williams, thirty-two twenty-six South Colorado Street. Alex Gray, thirty-two twenty-five Carter. Brant Bristol, four fifty-one Little Basin Creek Road. Yvonne Temper, twenty-five thirty Molton Street. Wendy Grace, one ninety-seven Dry Bean Road. John Pullman, three hundred West Mercury. Kendall Brown, nine sixty-three Stagecoach Road. Kelsey Cunningham, eight thirty-five Sixth Street. Cindy Simkini, twenty-eight thirty-five State Street. Ralph Booth and Carol Booth, one ninety Elkhorn Lane. David Pastic, thirteen oh nine Herman Galt's Road. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your names. Matt and Christine Cox, one oh one Cork Street. Lisa Epsilon, eight thirty-three Hummingbird Lane. Is that Glenn McLaughlin, twenty-six twenty? Silver Bowl Boulevard? Chris Bryson. Eric Lieber, five thirty Little Basin Creek Road. Dallas Seymour, forty-nine seventy-seven Foothill Road. And then I just have a, a few more non-form letters. Butte Silver Bow Zoning Board, one fifty-five West Granite. Start out small and build solar fields on Basin Creek side. Harrison Avenue side, we do not need the Black Sea below our beloved highlands for all. All for the idea, not at Little Basin Creek. Thanks. And I'm sorry, but I cannot read that. Dawson Huff.
Members of the zoning board of adjustments, please consider me an opponent to the proposed solar farm in South Butte. I do not see any benefit for our great community. As I read it, the only folks who would benefit from the project are the Washington Corporation, who will own the project, and China, who will make the solar panels. In the end, Washington will own three hundred megawatts of electricity that he can sell any place in the future. Montana currently only has approximately two thousand total megawatts of electricity. With sixteen hundred acres of black space, what is, which is what is going to be there, we are creating another one mile by two mile square scar on the south edge of town, similarly to the one mile by two mile square Berkeley Pit on the other end of town. The Berkeley Pit is one mile by two miles across. The question I would ask is what are the long-term environmental, social, and health long-term effects of the project on our community? Obviously, there is numerous unknowns associated with the farm that must be addressed before such a project to this magnitude should ever be even considered. I also understand that there are large tax breaks and other government incentives for building such a project. In the end, are taxpayers of Butte and the nation going to pay for the facility? For me, while I do not live close to the solar farm, it definitely could have future negative ramifications for the community. As always, I just care, and Butte deserves better for its daily. Good afternoon. I'm reaching out today to take the time to address my concerns in regards to the solar panel farm that is currently being mapped and planned for the Basin Creek area. I never thought a time would come that I would have to do this, and the hurt I have for the future of our community is very unfortunate. The Basin Creek Reservoir is amazing. If you discuss with anybody what their thoughts are about the drive from Industrial Park to Basin Creek Reservoir, every person would tell you the beauty it holds and the wildlife they've seen. I want our future generations to be able to enjoy this area. I worry that the solar farm will, will only intimidate people from wanting to be a part of our community. From the eyesore it will be to the noise and even the disruption of our wildlife, I truly believe this will push people from our area rather than bring people in. Butte is amazing. Its characteristics are like no other city in America. From the industrial and raw feel of uptown Butte to the breathtaking views and sunsets towards Basin Creek, Butte is truly one of a kind. It's built on a community, hard work, and dedication. The solar farm stands for nothing that we do. We fight hard for each other, and we believe in what is right. I hope that you can dig deeper and see that this land means more than any dollar could buy. It's untouched, and once again, we will never get that back. Sixteen hundred acres that will change and ruin forever. I truly hope you take the time to hear the thoughts of your community and understand that Butte, America, always needs opportunities. This just isn't the right one. Thank you, Cassidy Leary.
Hi. Please, please consider.
Please, please consider, please, please, please consider instead of the proposed planning of the solar plant south of Butte, having it out on the west of town in the industrial park. It makes more sense than plowing out what could be lucrative real estate for residential and driving established homes in the area to have their value lowered. I'm not opposed to solar energy on a whole, but I do oppose the current selected location for the plant. Thank you for the consideration, Caitlin Ertz.
The next set is letters that are all very similar, so I'll read the first letter and then the names and addresses of the remaining. To whom it may concern, I am opposed to the proposed location of the Basin Creek Solar Project that is affiliated with Atlas Power on the Gosden McDermott Cattle Ranch Company. This area is zoned as residential and should primarily remain as such. There are more appropriate areas conducive to such a vast, massive endeavor, such as the Tiffett Area immediately west of Butte. It has been stated that a portion of the three hundred megawatts of power generated by the Basin Creek Solar Project will go directly to Atlas Power. The current cryptocurrency facility, along with its planned future expansion of an additional eight cryptocurrency facilities. Atlas Power intends to use seventy-five megawatts of the total three hundred megawatts of power annually, even with the proposed expansion. The remaining power is able to go anywhere. It is my understanding that this remaining power will be put on the grid and sold on the open market to out-of-state interests without providing any tangible amount of green energy to the Butte community. Unfortunately, the planned solar project and cryptocurrency expansion does not translate into dozens of permanent high-paying technological positions. It has been stated in the end there will only be five to ten jobs created. Future economic development and expansion resulting from this project has not been defined or demonstrated other than pie-in-the-sky promises. It remains to be seen if the projected influx of millions of dollars in outside investment to the community will come to pass. Does Butte deserve another industrial eyesore at the south end of town or should we preserve the green space and quality of life afforded by our area? The entire dynamic of Butte and pastoral views of South Butte would be forever lost. I strongly urge the zoning board to carefully consider the ramifications of the approval of the special use permit. Thank you for your time. Kayla Caldwell, five ninety Coyote Lane. Car- Carol Thon, two fifty-one East Badger Lane. Donald Hampa, thirty-two oh eight Cassuth. Sandra Hampa, thirty-two oh five Cassuth. Chet Reed, six seventy-nine Coyote Lane. Melissa Reed, six seventy-nine Coyote Lane. Alan Eliason, fourteen fifty-seven Sunset Road. Chris LaRue, twenty-two eighteen Argyle. Brant Bristol, four fifty-one Little Basin Creek Road. Carol Lee Larson, thirty East Badger Lane. Bob Larson, thirty East Badger Lane. Melanie Frossard, three eighty-eight Little Basin Creek Road. Mark Frossard, three eighty-eight Little Basin Creek Road. Charles Bueller, four eighty-one Little Basin Creek Road. Brenda Bueller, four eighty-one Little Basin Creek Road. Carla Caldwell, eight twelve Coyote Lane. Doug Caldwell, eight twelve Coyote Lane. Mary Trimble, five twenty-five Little Basin Creek Road. Judith Tillman? Judith Tillman, thirty-four sixty-seven Hancock. Dan Goody and Mary Goody of twenty-five oh four State Street. Zach Bolton, eighty-seven fifty U.S. Highway ten. Linda Fasencani, one seventeen Aspen Lane. Robert Fasencani, one seventeen Aspen Lane. Michael Trimble, five twenty-five Little Basin Creek Road. Danielle Rosen, fifty-three East Broadway. Lisa Kingston, maybe, thirty-three twenty-five Quincy. Lori Parino, twelve eleven First Street. Rhonda Lewis, sixty-six Apple Orchard Road. Judy Timmer and Donald Timmer, one oh nine Beaver Pond Road. John Lewis, sixty-six Apple Orchard Road. Eric Cora, twenty fifty-eight Lowell Avenue. Sherry Wolverton, fourteen hundred Major Street. Carol Wolverton, seventeen fifty-two Oregon. Cheryl Wolverton, seventeen fifty-two Oregon. Nick Taylor, thirteen ten East Park. James D. Silva, ten fifty-five Black Tail Loop Road. Paul G. Frye's, eighteen fifty Hancock Avenue. Carol L. Hafer, thirty-four hundred Hill Avenue number thirteen oh six. Joanne Moon, one fifteen Waldron Drive. Laura Moon, thirty-one oh nine Yale Avenue. Eric Clark, ten seventeen South Arizona. Thomas Moon, one fifteen Waldron Drive. Richard Clark, twenty twenty-one Garfield. Daniel Riley, forty thirty-one Bull Run. Jim Swanson, thirty-one sixty Atherton Lane. Jack V. Hook, twenty-nine twenty Hannibal. Zachary W. Hall, one twenty-one Grandview Drive. David Kersting, thirty-four thirty-four Burlington Street. Eric Lieber, five forty Little Basin Creek Road. Albert and Denise Zelinsky, seventy-four Apple Orchard Road. Rebecca Hook, twenty-nine twenty Hannibal. Becky L. Alseth, twenty-nine thirty Hannibal. Shane Alseth, twenty-nine thirty Hannibal. Eric Eckner, twenty thirty-five Walnut. Brian Hood, eight thirty-one Pump House Road in Divide. Timothy Ecker, two- twenty thirty-five Walnut Street. Walter S. McIntosh, ninety-five Hidden Creek. Jeanette Paul, twenty thirty-five Walnut Street. Bill Bowden, one twenty, or I'm sorry, one twelve Winkie Way. Dan Ramirez, thirty-six Dry Bean Road. Tanya Fay, Stephen Wilco- and Stephen Wilcox, five sixty-nine Cotton Tail Lane. Melissa Wilcox, Edward Wilcox. Michaela Skinner, five sixty-nine Cotton Tail Lane. Dawson Huff, four twenty-five Little Basin Creek. Robert D. Mark, one- ten thirty-eight Wapiti Mountain Road. Erica Malley, thirty-four oh one and a half Kennedy Avenue. Susan Merrick, ten thirty-eight Wapiti Mountain Road. Mr. Chairman, that concludes all of the written comments. As you know, in conclusion that the board has all of the information on the application and you will have sixty days to make a decision. Within those sixty days, you could deny the application and get reasons for the denial in writing to the applicants or approve the application and the zoning officer shall issue a zoning compliance permit with conditions specified therein. And with that, that concludes the report. And we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Do any board members have any questions of the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple questions. Ms. Casey, planning staff. In your, early on in your presentation, and forgive me if you kind of already hit on this, but you had mentioned some setbacks, et cetera, that Fish Wildlife and Parks kind of proposes for sites like this. Could, would you be able to let me know or let the board know? Are the applicants abiding by those setbacks or are their setbacks different? Are they bigger, less? Et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Schaefer. In regard to those setbacks from the Fish Wildlife and Parks, they are in regards to the perennial stream and the wetlands. The applicants have not completed their analysis of those areas, so those are not showed up, shown on the information that you have.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question if you don't mind. With regards to that FAA review of this project, do you have any idea of when that might be available? I just, I would hate to, you know, if we were to go ahead with this project, I would just hate to see them get in a situation where the FAA might have issue with it and we're in the middle of it or starting it or whatever.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Schaefer, I don't have an answer for, for that. Uh, the email I received from Pam Chamberlain today just said, please be advised that Matt Vincent, the consultant of the above project, has worked closely with the airport throughout the project's planning process. They have completed the required FAA documents and supplemental studies and have submitted them to the FAA. The FAA has not yet made a determination. If you have any questions or concerns, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do any other board members have any questions of the staff?
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mrs. Casey, I kind of have some fact-finding to do here. I've read this massive report and I tell you a few times I got lost, so bear with me. There was somewhere a mention of government land. Do you know what that is, where it's at, and how it stands?
Within the report, Mr. Collins?
Well, uh, just a synopsis. I, I read it, but I kind of went over my head, so. Is there government land that's involved in this, uh, application?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, no, all of the land is under uh, the ownership of the Gosden McDermott Cattle Company. You may, maybe in the, I think where you were reading that was in their legal descriptions where they do own some government lots, but they are under their ownership, so it's not a government entity that's involved.
Okay. So, uh, the rail line that, that runs through that property is abandoned, probably the school sections have been sold. I'm just wondering about if any of that is, I guess it's, you just answered it. It all belongs to the ranch company.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, yes, that's correct. It's all under their ownership.
Okay. Let's see, let me go back through here. Um, are you aware of how much land is available at the, uh, the data center site? To possibly put panels on, or is that something that you don't know much about? I could ask somebody else.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, on the data center, that's the old MSC site, I think that would be better, uh, asked of the applicant, how much of land they have available.
Okay. Uh, one more question for you, Mrs. Casey. Do you know who owns the substation, the existing substation at the old site there?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, the Basin Creek Substation?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe, I believe it's the entity of Basin Creek, but I don't have that with me.
Okay, and I can ask that question again. Thank you, Mrs. Casey. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Do any other board members have any questions of the staff? Not hearing any. The next step in our proceeding, the applicants would then now get an opportunity to present their case in support of their application. Since it's been an hour and a half since our last break, I'm going to take another five-minute recess. Then the applicants can present their case. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, it is, our break is over and the applicants now get an opportunity to present their case in support of their application. Yeah, are the applicants ready to do that, Matt? And I think, I'm not sure your mic is on, there's red, no, it is.
I think it is now. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the zoning commission, for the record, my name is Matt Vincent. I've been working on this project with the development team for the last several months. I'd like to start by thanking the planning staff. We've had a lot of questions of them and they've been good to work with. I think I'd also like to thank you all for your patience in going through this as we're about halfway there, I think. That said, I think that we have a very detailed proposal, that we're going to walk through those 20 different points. We're going to do our best not to be redundant and we're also going to do our best to work in clarifications, facts, and rebuttals of what we heard in a lot of those letters. Of course, we'll also reserve our opportunity to address any of the verbal comments once those are over. But I can't, I can't stress more, just again, the appreciation of everybody's time and patience here tonight and that what we're about to hear from the project team is going to be detailed and should answer a lot of the questions that we've been hearing. So, I think, I think there's a quote from a famous Texas senator and civil rights leader by the name of Barbara Jordan that is a good thing for us to keep in mind as we move forward here. "It is reason, not emotions, which must guide our deliberations, guide our debate, and guide our decision." And we certainly respect the amount of time and energy it's going to take you guys to reach your decision on this and just urge you to listen to the facts and ask questions of our project team, who I'd like to introduce at this point. We have Zach Graham from Cushing Terrell, we have Nicole Olmstead from Cushing Terrell, we've got Sean Mesia from Cushing Terrell, Alan Bronick, his principal at Cushing Terrell, and his son Nathan Bronick is here. We also have the project owner and developer, Mr. Rick Tabish here, who's going to talk a lot about the data center side of this project. Clarifying that, we know that what we're presenting tonight is for the special use permit in variance relative to the solar project, but we look to utilize a lot of the acreage on the data center property, not so much for the solar that you asked about, Todd, but for construction staging and the vital proximity of the data center to the solar field. We appreciate, you know, let's look at other places to put this solar field, but the reality is because of what we have planned and the individuals involved and the entities involved, this is really the only place that this field could be put at this time. And so, I would also stress that, and some of the questions that you were asking, Mr. Schaefer, are pertinent to this. Tonight's a threshold step for us. We'll talk, we'll talk more about it in the permit, but this is the first permit that gets us through to continue a lot more steps in this process. We've spent a lot of, lot of time, energy, and money to this point getting us to tonight. We still have to look at what the FDA has to say in response to our permits. We still have to go through a number of state and local and even utility investigations and studies. If we aren't granted the ability to move forward with this special use permit, we'll never know what this project can or can't be, or won't be able to continue or make good on a lot of the promises that we've already made with folks. And so I just ask for you to take that into consideration as you listen to everything. We've been working on this now for a few months and there's been a lot of time and energy put into it, as I've already mentioned. There's also been a lot of new things we've learned and we've kind of switched certain things around and we'll talk a little bit about that. Again, if we're successful, once you guys reach your determination, which, you know, we wouldn't expect it would be tonight, but once you reach your determination on giving us a special use permit, we'll continue to develop and change this project to make it the best project that it can be. So, we ask you to allow us to succeed. I think I would also point out, as it will be brought up in the presentation as well, that because of the nature of special use permits, it's necessary, it's vital for us to give the surrounding landowners and all of you folks who are making this decision the maximum extent that we could develop on that property, which is the 1,600 acres and the 300 megawatts. We could move forward in pieces, but if we only started with 100 megawatts, we'd have to come back for two additional special use permits. We're already finding out that, as I said, we've changed things, we're continuing to change things. We will continue to learn more as we go through the additional permit phases of this project after we're hopefully getting a special use permit. And so, the application portends the full maximum use of this area. We believe there's going to be changes and we are continuing to work with every entity and including the landowners on what we can do to make this the best project that it can be. And so, again, I think we would ask for your consideration as we move forward on this. We will talk more about it in the last section, which happened to be the most lengthy session of the staff report, but we have put a premium on reaching out to adjacent businesses and landowners in this process and we will continue to work with those landowners as they become more willing and we move forward with this project. And I think we're prepared to talk a lot about that when we get to point 20 in the presentation. So, I guess with that, I just would ask, maybe we could start the slideshow here just so everybody can get a look at what this maximum outlay looks like. Go ahead and go to the first slide. So, just to kind of orient ourselves here, north, is this not working? Or it's not, it's not, it won't show up on the screen. Well, I can still hand this to you when I've done it, if you'd like. So, the top is, it's general north direction as you would expect on a map. To the right of the northern half of the solar field is the data center. You can see the dotted green line that goes into it. That is where we are proposing to connect to the grid, which also is the same location where the data center pulls its property, which becomes a very vital for the location of this right now. I mean, that's what drives what we have planned at the data center and it also allows us to tie into the grid right here in Butte without having to look at other additions of where this energy would go. Through the middle there is the Little Basin Creek floodplain area. That's a roughly half-mile-wide corridor that's being left open for watershed protection, riparian protection, and a wildlife corridor for the animals that frequent this area out here. We're going to get into a lot more detail when Zach steps up and starts walking us through the special use permit, but because of the importance of the data center and some of the experiences that we think already demonstrate our ability to develop projects of this nature, I would like to invite Mr. Rick Tabish up to talk a little bit about the project, his past involvement in the data center project and the team that he puts together for the projects that we build here in Butte. So, Rick?
Mr. Chairman, the rest of the members, planning, thanks for your time and effort you're putting into this. A real important project for us. I got involved in the crypto-watt days, I think it was 2018, when we took a look at doing something with the old MSC site and, you know, fortunately, we were successful with that. Back then, you know, we made a commitment to Butte, the surrounding area, to use, you know, local talent, which we, I think we've demonstrated, which should give some sort of a comfort level to everyone. In the past, that project was about a $62 million project that we put together and I can proudly say that Montana built that, starting with Cushing Terrell, which is a Montana engineering company that we're real proud of, Peterson Electric, McCree for trucking waste. It goes on and on. So, we've used union contractors. We're planning on using union contractors for the future build-out of the Atlas facility. I think you may hear from some of them tonight. But, again, the commitment that we've made and the commitment that we're going to hold true to is pretty tried and tested. This is a Butte project. This is a Montana project. If we can't source it from Butte, we've even gone to the pre-release, you know, when we've needed assembly people and tried to employ them and participate in that program as well with Mike Thatcher. So, having said that, John McDermott and I go back quite a few years. He's been neighbors to the project. He has had other suitors look at the project, tie his land up for years. He had the opportunity to terminate the lease and I looked at it and I just, I have a pretty vast education on solar, where it's going. I'm involved in a project in Broadview, which is 61,000 acres of wind and solar. So, having those resources available, had him look at John's project and the project looked good. I think you're going to experience a little bit different view when Zach and Cushing Terrell talk to you about panels, toxicity of contents, the footprint, actually what the watershed is on the panels versus not. As we can appreciate all the concerns of all the opposition, and I can really appreciate their concerns, I think an education's going to take us a long ways down the road. With regard to Atlas Power and where that's going, I think there's a misconception out there that this energy, we're going to use 75 megawatts and the difference is going to be sold to the grid and it's going to go out of state. The sole premise that Atlas wants to be involved in this project is to actually expand that business in Butte. Matt's done a pretty stellar job of interfacing us with the chancellor, Highlands College. The principal people that we're using in the GPU world, which gives us the ability to turn this project from a crypto-mining facility into a high-compute, high-performance computing facility, is the amount of money that's been pledged and committed and actually spent with companies like AMD and Nvidia. Because of the amount of equipment, we kind of inherit some of their client base. That project is going to be in dire need of a lot of education for people, which we've discussed. Matt and I have personally discussed with the chancellor and we're looking actually at taking that Highlands facility out there for the education end of it, providing we don't do an interface with Montana Tech, which is something that I would like to see, you know, for the students coming in, actually go to the college and have them place the people back, you know, in that facility that they're going to evacuate. It's quite an undertaking to become a worldwide force in high-performance computing. It's not 10 people. I mean, it's, you know, Atlas is looking at employing, you know, up to 120, 130, there could be a 300-person team there. When you gain that much energy and renewable energy, which is absolutely empirical in this market, we've talked to the Amazons, we've talked to a lot of the high-compute customers and one of the first questions that come out of their mouth is, "Are you guys renewable energy? Are you, is it coal energy, is it natural gas?" And if you answer anything but renewable or becoming renewable, you know, it's a quick conversation. Call us when you get something. So, what this project is enabling Butte to do is become a worldwide driving force. It's, you know, Kevin, I can say Washington Companies has nothing to do with this job. That's his father, that's their interest in MRI. Kevin, and I'll give him a lot of credit, I mean, he's got, you know, a lot of courage, a lot of spirit to take this project on himself. That project is a lot of debt on that young man and there's a lot of debt that has to be paid back. This isn't a freebie, this isn't anybody, I mean, this is three, four years return on investment, providing everything works well. This is only going to take that project a little bit further in debt, but what it does is it gets everybody in the world looking at Butte, Montana, and Kevin knows that. This is a Montana project. This is a project that we talked to the governor's office about. This is a project that we're real proud of and that's why I've spent a lot of my money doing the proper investigation so that we can bring that data to you in this room and have you make an honest and calculated, excuse me, decision on which way you want to go with this, whether to zone it, you know, in favor of the project or not. So, as a project owner at this point, I pledged to John, I said, "Well, let's do, let's get Cushing Terrell to look at it." They've got a pretty good footprint in this business in other countries, in the United States, and they were hired, you know, at the very first thing to take a look at the interface and how do we get that energy to the data center? Because really, at the end of the day, however much energy we can take on a 24-hour basis would be consumed by that data center. We'd like to expand it to 300 megawatts if we could. So, the only notion that you could hook to the grid and sell it out of state is just a financial equation for an investment group. Everybody wants options. That's an option. The number one option is let's keep that energy in Butte. We have a big interest from the letter that Dylan read from RAC. RAC Silica, they, I mean, they're desirous, if we don't, what we don't use, they would want to use it. That alone takes that energy. It's not going to produce 300 megawatts of energy around the clock or is it going to do that during sunlight hours? And I think Zach, Nathan, and Alan will clarify that. That facility, 140, 160 megawatts, I think is probably going to be the average. Our substation, which we do own, Mr. Collins, that was originally a 20-megawatt substation. We upgraded it and that's actually owned by Atlas Power. So, 75 megawatts is all the energy that we can get in southwest Montana per our transmission agreement. I was in study for two, almost two years with Northwest Energy trying to bring that slag project alive. There was nothing left. I mean, I still, to this day, I mean, it was a $71 million rebuild on the transmission lines between Garrison and Mill Creek. So, what is this going to do? I mean, this is going to enable Butte, Montana, and in the project to come alive and use energy that otherwise can't get off of the grid. I believe the grid equation, sure, we're going to pursue that and I think that's only prudent. If something happened, if something shut down or if something didn't manifest, we would like to send the energy to the grid. But in the short term, the big deal is let's get away from crypto. Let's use the crypto mining Ethereum. We're not a predominant Bitcoin mining company anymore. I mean, Kevin and Atlas have made the decision to go with the Ethereum. It's profitable, but it allows you to pay that equipment down and use those other legs of that high-compute process to do the things that are being demanded worldwide. So, from an education standpoint, it's going to bring education to you. From a revenue standpoint, it's going to bring a lot. I mean, the tax base on this is something, it's probably not to be discussed at this meeting, but I mean, it's, you're looking at hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue that I believe could far asset this community and bring the... bring the concerns of the visual effects of this superseded by the great things that can happen. Butte, there's no reason this shouldn't be the number one industrial city in Montana, and one of the top high compute, renewable energy epicenters worldwide. I mean, and because of this, we're getting called from, I mean, we've got a company flying from China, going to be here Monday, one of the largest server companies in the world, so. To cut it a little bit short, because I know brevity's important here, any notion that this is, we can only use 75 megawatts and the rest is going out of state, or any notion that it's just designed to make the Washington family more money is, should be thrown out the window. This is a private project from a corporation solely owned by Kevin Washington, and a lot of thought, a lot of engineering, a lot of large companies, worldwide companies are willing to participate with Atlas Power to make this project, you know, a really viable, sustainable project over years. The solar component finishes it, the solar component really sets Butte, Montana in a position where they can accomplish that and become with that facility, what copper was to the world, that should, in high compute, that's our goal, not to mine Bitcoin and be involved in something, you know, that's scrutinized as such, so. Let me open it up to any questions that you guys have, and I know that we want to get everybody out here, I want to get Zach up here with the details of this as soon as possible, so, anything you guys have?
Any board members have any questions of Mr. Tabish? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
All right, Chairman, Board Members, my name is Zach Graham with Cushing Terrill, I'm a civil engineer and the director of our infrastructure market, appreciate your time, we'll try to be brief as we can and really try to reduce redundancy as much as possible. I do want to emphasize a couple of things here, though, that Matt said, this is just a threshold kind of level for our permitting and approvals. Here's a list of some that we know we probably have to go through after this, if it were approved, flood plane, building permit, stormwater construction permit, FAA permit needs to be completed, the DEQ bonding and reclamation, and I'll go into more detail on that, as well as the system impact analysis with Northwestern Energy and the Interconnect Study. So, the other thing that I really want to emphasize, this is the threshold permit approval, but this is also what we're requesting is the max allowable, there's a lot of complicated engineering that goes into also the financial model to optimize the size of this project, but we need to get through this phase to continue into evaluating that, and so that's why we are asking for the maximum size of this project. You can go to the next slide, Josh. I'm not going to reiterate what Lori said here, except to point out, you're going to see two focuses as I work through each of the 20 criteria for your consideration, one, alignment with a comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2020, and number two, our efforts in the design on minimizing impacts to surrounding properties. Go to the next slide. Number one, location, character, natural features, Lori did a great job going through this, so let me move through it fairly quickly, if you could go to the next slide. The only thing that I want to point out on, this is the firm map, the flood plane map, base flood elevations have not been determined in this area, so part of any flood plane permitting would require us to determine the base flood elevations, and we are prepared to do that. With that said, we are doing everything, including going overhead with the power line to avoid wetland impacts and really, hopefully, avoid any impacts or installations within the flood plane itself. Go to the next slide. We've completed a wetlands delineation, the black areas on this map are the wetlands, jurisdictional wetlands will be avoided as part of this project, so the drainages that you've seen, the areas where there are not panels on the plan, those are the jurisdictional wetlands, we will be avoiding those as part of this project. The next one. Surrounding area, I have to, again, just emphasize the proximity of this project to the adjacent industry, and the importance of it, and the site location, Rick and Matt covered that, so we'll go ahead and move on from there. Number two, location, character, and design of adjacent buildings. To point out, to the north, obviously, the industrial buildings up there, to the south, the rural residential buildings, and I think we'll move on from there, that's been covered well. We'll go to number three, substantial changes to the area that have occurred, as Lori pointed out, this property really hasn't changed since the ordinance was adopted in 1978, the major change that has happened is to the industrial park to the north. Want to point out, and that really started in the 70s, I'll get to some specific dates, I think one important note that Lori did state is that there has been a zone change in this area immediately to the north from residential to industrial that supported the TED that went forward. And you can go on from there. So, the TED, this Targeted Economic Development District, that's the green area, I want to really emphasize, this was a county decision to focus industry and economic development in this area, this is only one of four areas within the county, I think Rick did a great job of emphasizing why this development supports the TED and is important for this area. You can go forward from there. Couple other things, 1971 was really the start of the industrial district, industrial park itself, the, in 2006 is when the Basin Creek Power Plant came on, that's the adjacent natural gas power plant. When, I also want to point out, the Mike Mansfield Technology Center was originally a clean coal technology center, and I point these things out because this has been an energy-focused, energy development area, really since the history of the start in 1971 of the industrial park addition, and then 2016, the South Butte TED that we've already spoken about. So, really, here showing this historical process of progress, of really the zoning, the land use in this area, that this solar development lends itself to further support the economic development. Go to the next slide. Number four, proposed fencing, screening, and landscaping. Lori went through the exclusionary fencing, that is Fish Wildlife approved, they are requesting that. I want to point out on this map that the area, specifically the east-west area, that is wide open for a wildlife corridor, we meet all of the Fish Wildlife and Parks setbacks with this design here, that we're in the letter. That green line that's heavy right in the middle, there's the north-south dash line, and then there's the green heavy line, that's the only overhead power line on the development. As we further refine this, we're avoiding the drainages, we're avoiding the riparian areas, and the fencing is just to the consolidated areas of the solar panel, we're not putting a fence around the whole property, just to keep them out of the solar panels, and I think that's important to understand. So, we are, from a screening and landscaping standpoint, we are requesting the variances that Lori went through, we'll discuss those a bit more later, we can go ahead and go on to the next one. Really, the alternative to that landscaping, we just want to point out, wanting to make this an area, this is an educational opportunity, not just for people to learn about solar, but also for electricians, there's going to be more and more solar all across the country and in Montana as well, that are going to be able to use this as an educational opportunity. But as a landscaping alternative, we're really focused on that walking trail, the gateway signs, the educational signs, we want to seed that whole frontage on Basin Creek Road with native wildflowers, and one thing to point out, because it did come up as a comment in terms of safety for this area, we would propose to gate that off so that it was not accessible at night for any activities that might not be appropriate in the area. The last thing I want to point out here is we are working with Butte Silver Bow Arboretum and Parks and Rec to support tree planting and community improvements as an additional mitigation measure for the landscape ordinance. I think furthermore, just recognizing the impact of a screening would really, probably because of the height, would really negatively affect the rural character of the area and the current character of the area, to put screening around the entirety. And as a result, that other mitigation area, we do have five letters with adjacent property owners of agreement that we're already working with people, we want to work with them to, if they want screening on their property, we want to work with them, what do they want, what does that look like, so that is proceeding with adjacent property owners. You can go to the next slide. Want to hit these, these are some conceptual renderings of what the educational area may look like with an awning and a board, picnic table, and you can go on from there to the next slide, this is a conceptual rendering of what the gateway entrance signs might look like with native landscaping adjacent to it, you can go to the next one. Again, another conceptual rendering of the pull-off of the walking path that we're proposing, this would be ADA accessible for the public during the day, and you can go to the other one. And this is just another rendering of what this might look like, and again, the details of this would be worked out as we work through the building permit process with the city county. All right, I have a quick drink, excuse me. Okay, so number five, proposed vegetation, topography, and natural drainage. First thing I want to point out here is we are not mass-grading the site, there's not going to be bulldozers on the site, removing all the topsoil or changing the drainage of the site. The panels and the foundation system, the foundation system's actually installed with ground screws, there's going to be a single tracked drill rig that will go out and install the ground screws, and it will just follow the topography of the land. Any disturbed areas or vegetative areas that are disturbed because of construction will be revegetated, the grass will grow under the panels. I think furthermore, just to point out from a drainage standpoint, solar fields don't increase the impervious area, we've had discussions with the DEQ with Butte Silver Bow Engineering staff, and really what happens is as rainfall lands on the solar panels and falls onto the ground, it really just then goes underneath to the adjacent panel going forward, so. I also just want to reemphasize, there's not going to be any panels in Little Basin Creek or the other drainages, we're avoiding those, we're avoiding the wetlands. Let's go ahead and move on from there. Item number six, or criteria number six, proposed vehicular access, circulation, and parking, including that relating to bicycles and other unpowered vehicles and provisions. This has been covered well, I want to just state, the one area that will have public access will be ADA accessible to that educational area. One other thing that I want to point out that we did not, that was in the staff report, sidewalk curb and gutter being required along Basin Creek Road, we would propose to come back to you with a variance on that, it doesn't really meet the rural character. Furthermore, curb and gutter is essentially a drainage capturing system for an urban area, it doesn't fit, the sidewalk would be a sidewalk to nowhere, so we would, if this were approved, we would come back for an additional variance on that. Go to the next slide. Here's an image of the typical layout, when viewed from farther away in some of the view sheds, this can look very dense, a couple of things I want to point out here, there's 25 feet clear between each row of solar panels, and then they're in larger columns, there's 35 feet between each column, from the exclusionary fence to the nearest solar panels is another 25 feet, this allows inspection, it's really, the purpose of it is, they're not going to cast shade on one another when the sun's lower in the sky, but what it also does is allows easy access for maintenance inspection, but also emergency access, whether emergency vehicles need to get into the field for any purpose, or through the solar field for any purpose, it provides easy access through that area. One other thing I want to point out here, that little box on the upper side, there's been a lot of talk about noise generated by these, I want to be very clear, the solar panels themselves do not generate noise, they're silent, it's the inverters that convert the DC-generated electricity to AC, there's 40 to 50 of those in the overall field, and again, we're going to place those out and away from the property line, there's, sounds like a dishwasher, typically 70, 80 feet away, that sound dissipates, you can't hear it anymore, but just want you to know that Big Sky Acoustics is going to be engaged in this to verify that the location of our proposed inverters, that that sound has dissipated before it would reach the boundary of the project. Go to the next slide. I want to talk more detail here in terms of construction, certainly legitimate concerns have been raised about increased traffic, in particular during construction, what we're looking at in terms of material delivery is number one rail coming into the project site, if it's economically feasible. If not, what we're proposing is to bring all the materials in through the Atlas Power site, the approach off of the road there, it's, if you haven't seen it, it's a deep approach, if for some reasons multiple trucks come, if for some reason multiple trucks come at the same time, it allows plenty of room for stacking. Additionally, there's about 25 acres on the property that can be used for staging and storage of materials, as the materials continue to come, further staging would happen on the property itself, there's plenty of room out there, and what that does is really keep traffic out and off of Basin Creek Road, construction traffic itself, not that there wouldn't be any, but there will be efforts to minimize it, there are existing approaches on Basin Creek Road to Mr. McDermott's property, those would be improved to a rural MDT approach that would allow a truck, if for some reason needs to get through, to fully pull off of the road to open any gate or provide access to it. So, another big one, dust control and just overall control of where construction traffic goes on a project like this. On a project of this scale, construction traffic just isn't given free rein to go anywhere on the project, they have very specific paths that they can travel on, as, and everything is sequenced in such a way that they continue on those paths, and then those areas that have been disturbed, have been constructed on, are reseeded behind it. Also, dust controls, and that helps with overall dust control throughout the life of the project. So, I'll leave it with that, I mean, maybe just one other thing, this isn't a heavy civil project, there's not large excavators out there, this is light equipment, pickup trucks, installing aluminum racking, you know, it's easy to lift a panel up and install it in the racking, so it's not heavy equipment, heavy diesel equipment, the largest piece of equipment will be a tracked drill rig that's putting in the ground screws that act as the foundation for the racking system itself. Thank you. Proposed pedestrian circulation provisions for handicapped persons and proposed signs and lighting, this has been hit pretty well, I'm going to go straight to number eight, so you can go to the next slide, please. Our signs are limited to what we've shown you, gateway signs, educational signs, except for we will have caution, medium voltage on the perimeter fencing. With that, I want to be very clear, this is not high voltage, it's medium voltage. And then finally, from, just from a lighting standpoint, there is no proposed site lighting, no buildings, no site lighting, the dark sky will remain as it is in that area at night. Go to the next one. Number nine, so all potential nuisances, we addressed quite a multitude of potential nuisances in our report, four were specifically addressed in the staff report from noise, viewshed, wildlife, and construction. I addressed the noise, the only noise generated is from the inverters, so we can go to the next one, but I'm going to skip over that one because I already spoke about it, and then from the visual impact standpoint, you know, again, just want to point out, yes, it is a big project, yes, it'll be seen, the, you know, from the topography around it, you're going to be see it regardless of if there were a perimeter buffer, we really have taken that into consideration, believe that approaching property owners to say, what do you want specifically on your property, if it's an interest, is an appropriate mitigation measure for this. And with that, yeah, let's go ahead and go on to the next one, please. Wildlife impacts, I want to address the Fish Wildlife and Parks letter in a little bit more detail, three things they talked about, number one, this isn't elk winter range, that they, their recommendation was to consolidate panels with exclusionary fencing around those panels, the design already does that, as we continue to ref-. As we continue to refine the design, we'll continue to consolidate and provide that exclusionary fencing. The second one was potential bird effects, the lake effect, drawing in birds. And I want to say with that is really, these are bifacial panels. What's that, they're not made to reflect, they're made to absorb. And when I say bifacial, they also absorb any reflection off the ground from other, from underneath. So the, this is not a concentrated fold of the taic mirrored system with the parabolic mirrors that you see out in the desert that are, that get really hot. So while there is a heat island effect associated with these, it's very similar to a, what would go in if this were to be a, you know, a subdivision that came in from the asphalt shingles to the roadways. You might see a six degree Fahrenheit heat island effect. The advantage of the solar panels is you're going to see the dissipation of that heat effect a lot quicker in the evening than you would on asphalt shingles or asphalt roadways. So it'd be very similar to that. So from the bird effect view, these are absorptive panels. And also the 25 foot spacing between the panels really reduces that lake effect as well. Fisheries, and again, I just want to emphasize, we are meeting the recommended setbacks from Fish Wildlife and Parks from wetlands and open bodies of water. All right, you can go on to the next one, thank you. We talked about construction impacts, a couple of things that, from a nuisance standpoint, that I do, I need to add to the construction here. We talked about Atlas Power Delivery. Working hours being limited from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM Monday through Saturday. Again, this is light vehicles, pickup trucks, there is the tracked drill rig. Dust control is important, but I just really want to emphasize, this isn't a heavy civil project that would be, you would see if say a subdivision went into this area. Go to the next slide. All right, public health and safety. I want to touch base a little bit on the fire. I know that the volunteer fire department responded to this. There's concerned about, there's concerns about what might happen with that. Number one, I want to say the site is going to be vegetated. It will be maintained, whether it needs to be mowed once a year, twice a year, that'll be determined. There's also consideration of, you know, sheep won't damage a solar field. Do they come into the exclusionary fencing to help control some of that combustible material? And again, we, as part of the permitting process, we want to work with the emergency response community to develop a robust emergency response plan. That means gated access for them to get into it if they need to respond to an emergency, but also to pass through the property if they need to get to other rural areas to the west and be able to pass through it. The thing I want to point out too is there's been a lot of talk about toxicity and there's, hey, what happens if a solar panel is punctured? The solar panel itself is solid. If there, it's not like there's a liquid toxin inside of it. The only way that it would become toxic is let's say it melts. Well, the fire from, a fire, let's say a fire goes through the field, the heat generated by a grass fire isn't going to be sufficient to melt the panels, melt the racking system that would release any kind of a toxin as part of this. So really that hazard, that to public, potential hazard to public health or safety or to emergency responders just doesn't exist. Water availability, I think we just want to point out, or say, you know, if to the western portion of the property where there's not immediate water access, would be more than happy to put a draft well for a fire truck to gain water in that area. And then some of the other things that have been brought up, electromagnetic frequency. This is medium voltage. If you were to walk in and through the field, you really wouldn't expect any more of an electromagnetic frequency than what we're experiencing in this room or what we experience in our homes. It's again, medium voltage. Traffic, once this is constructed, minimal traffic. I mean, it's somebody maybe out there on an ATV once a week just to go drive through and inspect things and take a look at it. And I've really already addressed the construction traffic issue and routing that traffic through the Atlas Power Site, minimizing what would go off of Basin Creek Road directly. All right, you can go to the next one. I want to, I want to discuss the decommissioning plan a little bit here. There's been a lot discussed there. First of all, just to summarize the DEQ requirements, after the one year operational date, will be required to submit a reclamation plan for review and a comment approval. That would also include a bond calculation. That reclamation plan not only includes the removal from the site, but how are the panels going to be disposed? And those do need to be disposed in appropriate manner. We'll have to evaluate, is Butte Silver Bow's landfill appropriate or not? We'll also evaluate recycling options. I can tell you right now, DEQ is going to make us look at the most expensive option, whatever that may be. Recycling is probably the cheapest, they'll probably make us look at landfilling it. Although there is a growing recycling opportunity for panels coming off of industrial or, yeah, larger projects like this. Just because the higher quality, high production panels are used like this, and they still do have a service life. Maybe they have less output than current technology, but they, there is that opportunity. We are very much interested in that recycling opportunity. But I just want to say from a decommissioning standpoint, they're going to make us evaluate the end life of that and probably make the bond value for whatever the worst case scenario is for the disposal of those panels. At the 15 year mark after, after operational date, the DEQ will reevaluate the reclamation plan. New technology will be evaluated at that time. The bond of that value will be reevaluated. And that's the point at which the bond is actually posted with the DEQ. That assures decommissioning in case people walk from the project. So really the intent of the reclamation plan is to restore the property to what you see today. Again, we're not mass grading the site, we're not changing drainage patterns. We're not changing the overall vegetative cover of the property. The solar panels will operate within what really exists out there now. So I'll leave it with that and go on from the next one there. All right, public utilities and services, doesn't require water, doesn't require sewer. There is not a battery energy storage system associated with this. That is not part of this project at all. Really, if we talk public utilities, we talk connection to the grid, that preexisting, what's out there now, that substation and the power that comes in there, will be delivering medium voltage AC power to that substation. At that point is when it is, if it were to go back to the grid, it goes to high voltage or it's, you know, really used right in that area for Atlas Power. So just want to be really clear about that, otherwise no other utility requirements for this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nicole now. She's going to go hit some highlight points for the rest of the criteria. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks Zach. Good evening, thank you for having me, Chair, members of the board. My name's Nicole Olmstead. I'm a planner with Cushing Terrell. And since we have just learned a whole lot of details about what the project will look like, what are the components that go into it, I'm going to hopefully walk us through why this project fits in and aligns with things like zoning and that growth policy that you guys worked so hard on creating. So the first item that considers those issues are, is number 12, situations which prevent the utilization of the property for the full range of uses allowed in the district. Essentially, my understanding of this criteria is that we're asked to talk about, is there anything that's preventing the property from being used as it's zoned? And right now it's zoned residentially. And while the project site is zoned residentially, it's not identified in the 2020 comprehensive plan as a priority for future residential development. Next slide. As you can see here, this is an exhibit taken from the comprehensive plan. The areas that have been identified by county residents as priority for future residential development occur in those purple spaces. The closest space is to the north of the site and it's really vague, but you can, the TED district is outlined in yellow there. There's also the Home State Meadows subdivision area located to the south of the property, but neither one of those areas are located on the project site. Number 13, that the use sought would enhance and promote the comprehensive development of the immediate neighborhood and community. This is a big one. The comprehensive, when you're thinking about comprehensive development, it doesn't necessarily require that we, that we see more of the same development. But decision makers have to consider whether or not the uses can complement one another. The surrounding neighborhoods are characterized by rural residences, mostly to the south, unzoned properties to the south, and industry located in the areas that are highlighted on this slide. Just to point them out again, we have the green area, which is the South Butte TED District. We have the Butte Industrial Park. We also have the Atlas Power Data Center. And then we also have a Basin Creek Power Company, which is a natural gas facility. For the surrounding, excuse me, sorry. The proposed project effectively bridges these three seemingly different community needs. For residences in unzoned areas, the project brings predictability to a changing area. The use will not compete for water or increase traffic in an area, in the area, once the construction is complete. For industry, the project builds on the innovation and historical industrial nature already seen in the area. It's located adjacent to the TED, which we've talked about and touched on, which is an area that the county has specifically designated as it would, as a place where the community would want, would like to see future commerce and industrial development take place. The TED is created specifically to draw the attention of business owners and to, and actually implement improvements that make new development in that area attractive to innovative and new businesses. Next slide. Number 14, that the use or classification conforms generally to the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan and the purpose of this ordinance. Conformance with the comprehensive plan objectives and purpose of this ordinance can be considered when you look at place types. As you know, place types are used to categorize land uses in the county and help decision makers consider the appropriateness of a new project. The place type assigned to the project area is working lands with a small portion located in the unzoned area as rural residential. It's also important to note that the working lands designation and property is located adjacent to economic driver, the economic driver place type. As a working lands place type, the proposed project closely aligns with limited resource extraction land uses, which is a list, which is listed as an appropriate use for lands designated with this place type. Next slide. So here, I'm drawing a few conclusions about how you can associate solar generation with the idea of limited resource extraction. They're both similar in that they have finite lifespans for activity. In this case, a solar array has a projected lifespan between 25 and 40 years. Both activities rely on the physical characteristics of a site. This site was specifically selected for its gradually sloping terrain, its expansive and open grasslands, and also its proximity to the Atlas Data Center. While there is those similarities, solar arrays have fewer impacts than resource extraction because essentially, once constructed, the operation or the generation of solar power will produce no dust, have no impact to water, soil or air quality, and produce no wastewater. And finally, ultimately, decommissioning and reclamation plan will be required. This is also a similarity between resource extraction and the proposed solar project. The next few slides, I consider the, a few of the goals and objectives that were listed in the comprehensive plan. I found two that were specifically applicable to the project that we're proposing and that you're considering today. The first one is that, is, the goal is to provide economic opportunity through innovation, enhancing Butte Silver Bow's economy by thinking outside the box. And to expand opportunities for industry to allow a broad mix of uses and intensities. The proposed solar project creates an opportunity for this board to think outside the box. Without this approval, the current data center would be limited to crypto development and not be able to gain consideration from larger tech companies or evolve in any way. The construction of the solar arrays themselves will also provide opportunities for local workers. And ultimately, the array itself will create the potential to attract future economic development to the area. And that was something that Rick and Matt talked about a lot. Essentially, the point is, is to think big and to think outside the box and to attract future opportunities that may not even be on the horizon at this point. Okay, next slide. The second goal that I found to be applicable was the goal to ensure a clean and healthful environment for all residents, regardless of age, gender, economic status, or where you live in Butte Silver Bow. In particular, the, this goal calls for protection of sensitive wetlands and riparian areas in the county. The proposed solar array is a clean energy green project. It produces no wastewater, it generates no dust or impacts soil. It also, the site design itself also is specifically or thoughtfully crafted in order to avoid wetlands and the riparian areas. I should also mention that it was briefly touched upon that there is also an opportunity to maintain an agricultural component to this project. There's new technologies and new partnerships forming that incorporates agriculture and solar power generation. And that is something that the project owner is interested in learning more about. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to one of our principals at Cushing Terrell who's going to walk you through some things that I wouldn't be able to, and then I'll come back and finish.
Thanks Nicole, my name's Alan Bronick, I'm an electrical engineer at Cushing Terrell. I'm going to talk real briefly about the power production aspects and why this site is appropriate for this project. So. Sure, Bronick is B-R-O-N-E-C, Czechoslovakian. So the big question is, why Butte, Montana? And the simple answer is a concept called distributed generation. The main concept behind distributed, distributed generation is to place power production resources as close as possible to the load. This is much more efficient than transporting power long distances from a central power plant that might be in Coal Strip or Townsend or wherever. Distributed power generation eliminates transmission and distribution line losses. By the time the power transmits hundreds of miles away, there's a significant loss in that power. And producing power at the point of consumption at the load will eliminate. will eliminate transmission and distribution losses. Distributed generation also provides voltage and frequency regulation for the grid. Solar farms, as this we're proposing, can regulate the local voltage and frequency on the grid. Distributed energy resources also will reduce grid congestion and free up power on the grid for other uses. So, the other thing I wanted to address is the question about, is this power going to get shipped out of state? The answer is no. The electrons don't care who has a power purchase agreement on paper. The electrons are going to flow to the closest load local to the site. And here in the Butte area, we got REC, that's a very large power consumer. We have Montana Resources, another large power consumer, Atlas Power. These three power consumers are three of the largest power consumers in the state. And the electrons produced from this solar farm will find their way to these facilities and the rest of the Butte community before it even goes out of state. It will not go out of state. The load here locally is much larger than what this plant will produce. So everybody in the community benefits from this green power, regardless of who the power purchase agreement on paper is signed with. The other aspect I wanted to touch on about this site is the industrial site. There's, most all the large tech companies around the country have very aggressive sustainability plans that want to co-locate next to solar fields and operate their facility on green power. That'll turn it back over to Nicole.
Thanks, Alan. Okay, back to zoning and all things comprehensive plan. Criteria number sixteen pertains to whether or not the use meets an overall density, yard height, and other requirements of the zone in which it's located. I think one of the main things to consider through this criteria is that there are no buildings currently proposed for this project site. All of the current, I guess, as depicted in this picture, all of the structures aren't enclosed. They're not housing anything. And they're also, you know, below the typical height of a modular home, and they will comply with the zoning regulations. Okay, number seventeen. That the use or classification will not adversely affect nearby properties or their occupants. This is probably one of the biggest criteria to consider when thinking about special use permits. So I'll just get right to it. The most prominent impact on nearby properties and their occupants will be a visual one. And visual impacts are difficult to mitigate because preference is subjective. Depending on personal values, someone may find sixteen hundred new homes, driveways, and roadways more offensive than the proposed solar project. Some people may not. The project owners are prepared to mitigate the visual impact by working directly with property owners to develop a site-specific buffering program that makes sense to them. Because what makes sense to one person may not make sense to their neighbor. Thought was given also to the panels themselves. The technology that was chosen for this particular project was selected so that it was non-reflective. That, again, will also bring the visual impact down to be non-reflective. Another point I would like to make about this is that Mr. McDermott is looking to get out of the ranching business. The ranch he owns is a large swath of private property that will evolve. It's going to become something else. When considering options, Mr. McDermott chose to lease his property to a group interested in constructing a solar array. Solar power generation will not generate air or water pollution. It uses zero water per megawatt hour to operate and will not compete with neighboring properties for water or impact their roadways by increasing traffic. Third, we've heard a lot about property values. We've heard a lot of concern about property values. And while that is a difficult thing to pin down, we did look into it and found five studies that were provided in the information that we submitted that showed no significant impact to surrounding property owners located in the vicinity of large solar arrays. Further, we also heard from a local appraiser who specifically stated that this area has not seen any impact to property owners, even though it has been used in the industrial nature historically. Next slide. Number eighteen. Conformity of the proposed use with the neighborhood plan if one has been adopted. No neighborhood plan has been adopted. How's that for simplicity? Next slide. Number nineteen. Compatibility of the proposed project with existing adjacent buildings, structures, neighborhood, topography, or other considerations. First, I want to talk about existing buildings. The highest density of existing buildings located adjacent to the site are commercial and industrial. The buildings include a natural gas power generation plant, the Basin Creek Power Plant, a data center, and numerous other industrial manufacturing, storage, and other commercial buildings. The solar panels that are being proposed for you to consider tonight will do, are compatible with the existing industrial buildings in the area. The second, I guess, category of existing buildings are those buildings associated with the residents. It's important to know that a portion of the residents are located to the south of the property are in an unzoned area. The solar array will produce minimal impacts and bring predictability to this large and undeveloped area. The array will also provide a buffer between existing industrial uses and those residential properties. Talking about the neighborhood in general. The neighborhood in general, the site was specifically selected for its proximity to Atlas Power and the opportunity to complement the existing buildings and industrial subdivisions that are located. Oh, sorry, you should have. Oh. Yep, sorry. I jumped around. Sorry. Off script. Sorry. Let's see. And I think the third one that I'd like to mention is that the proposed project complements topography. The site design is proposed to work with existing topography. The structures comply with structure height requirements. And as explained before, the design will avoid any mass grading, will avoid Little Basin Creek, and the site in general will be reseeded after any disturbance that takes place during construction. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who's going to talk about our effort for the outreach and open houses, and then I'm going to jump back on and try to wrap it up.
Thanks a lot. And I will state that, you know, I think we've covered a lot of the rebuttals to the public comment that was given in the staff's report. I might touch on a couple of those, but I think we're going to focus more to the, wait till after the verbal testimony has been given to kind of take it all in one swath, just so we can get to that, since all of these folks have been so patient. So, I'd like to, you know, really say that we emphasized and knew how important public outreach and opinion was going to be on this from the beginning. And so, we put a lot of premium on it. And we prioritized doing our best to reach out to the adjacent property owners as well as the ones that have a view of the property. And Cushing Terrell did a really thorough job of building a topographic model that was able to identify those properties that would not only be adjacent to the project, but have a view of it because of wherever their home is on the topography. And so, the result was, we sent out over two hundred letters to adjacent and viewshed area property owners, giving them some general information about the project, but more to the point, inviting them to come to two open houses that we had, each being three hours long out at the Atlas Data Center site. And we gave them an opportunity to learn a lot of what we've presented to you all tonight, but we also saw it as an opportunity for us to learn about what some of their questions and concerns were. As I've mentioned, we've been very responsive and flexible to the extent we've been able to in the timeframe we're looking at here, and are hopeful that we'll be able to continue that moving forward. So the two open houses that we had, the first one was on May eleventh. The second one was on May eighteenth. We had seventy people show up to those in combination, the vast majority of which were people that we'd sent that out to. I know there was a few folks that I think heard about it from word of mouth that showed up, but the intent was that it was for the adjacent property owners and the ones that we'd identified that had a viewshed of that area. Thought they went really well. We did hear that there was, we sent them bulk mail. So there was a few folks that reached out to me afterwards that said, hey, you know, we got your letter a day late. Couldn't make the first one because we didn't know about it, and we couldn't make the second one because we had something else planned. And so, spent a lot of time on the phone, made a lot of home visits to folks, both folks who went to the open houses and ones who were unable to go to the open house. We offered two additional open houses, primarily for the residents on Little Basin Creek Road. Unfortunately, they declined our offers for that. But I just want to put an emphasis on, we're still willing to let folks know, learn more about this project, and listen to what concerns that they have. In addition to those area landowner and viewshed property meetings, we also saw that it was a very important project that the community needed to go about. And so, we actually sought out that newspaper article that was a full feature story on a Sunday back in May. And we've cooperated with other local media and international, national and international media sources on providing information for this project. I mean, I think the attendance tonight has probably got a lot to do with that broader public outreach as well as the relationships and the conversations we've had with the more localized folks. The biggest thing, I think, that we want to do is, and we've mentioned it, it's been mentioned a couple of times in the presentation, is part of the landscaping that, you know, we've asked for a variance on, we do recognize, this is, it's a big project. You're not hiding this thing. We do realize that some people are affected a lot more because of their proximity to the boundary than others. And every single person that is in proximity to it or has a view of it has a different look at it, has a different perspective. They have their own property rights. That being said, we are working with the landowners. It's already been mentioned, we have letters of intent that have been sent out to a handful of property owners that show our commitment on the condition that this project moves forward, that we will do a number of things to help kind of mitigate some of their concerns and maybe their viewsheds of the property. That can range from planting of landscaping, moving some things around. I mean, there's, again, it's specific to each individual landowner and where they are in proximity to the project. Lori already mentioned those are private, between a private landowner and the private developer. But just know that we've already given some of those out, and we're prepared to continue to do that, even with the people that are opposed to this. We want to continue to meet and listen to what concerns are on the viewshed and find out what we can do to help them with those concerns. And like we've said, this project was laid out in the permit for the maximum. We are continuing to refine this. We are continuing to learn more. We've got a lot of additional steps we've got to do that might tell us we have to do things one way or another. We see that as, it's not only flexibility in how we can build the project better, but if we end up not building it to the maximum capacity, that gives us a lot of opportunity to work with adjacent landowners at further setbacks or how we put these together. It's already been mentioned that we're continuing to work with the Fish Wildlife and Parks Biologists on how we might be able to condense some of the footprint here. All of this, we won't know until we're able to move forward on this project. And so, I think with that, I will close what we've done on our public outreach and opinion and feel we've done a pretty exceptional job of doing everything we can in the period we've been given.
Okay, I'm going to wrap up our conversation about the special use permit and then super quickly go through the variance stuff, lightning fast speed. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so, the intent of the special use permit is to allow the board to consider uses other than those specifically listed in the code, as long as that use can be found to align with proper development and that reasonable conditions are in place to safeguard against potential adverse impacts. Commercial solar arrays are not specifically mentioned in the Butte code, but it does mention that electric power plants and other more intensive uses are appropriate for consideration in residentially zoned areas like the one we're talking about tonight. So a special use permit is an appropriate thing to consider and bring forward to this board today. Next slide. I think we have gone through the criteria, and you've learned a bit more about what the scope of the project entails. I hope we've been able to show that how our project meets and maybe exceeds some of the criteria that you have to consider for your special use permit review. The project also aligns with the 2020 growth policy, the comprehensive plan that I know took a lot of time and effort and resources to put together. As someone who looks at a lot of comprehensive plans, I just want to commend you on putting together a document that is usable and hopefully will be referenced for this decision. The use doesn't conflict with long-range planning. It stays out of those areas where the community has designated as priority for future residential areas. It also complements and promotes adjacent industrial land uses and the mission of the TED, which is to attract new and innovated businesses to the area. And finally, we do acknowledge that there will be impacts as a result of the project, but we are working to mitigate. project, but we are working to mitigate those, and we believe that we've come up with a, interesting way, innovative way to mitigate impacts that are specific to those landowners. So based on that information and that we've provided to you, we're asking that you approve our special use permit application.
Thank you.
Okay. Really quick, as I said, I just wanted to drive through these variance requests. We are, we are asking for four right now, and we will come back and ask for a fifth. Next slide. The first criteria that we're considering in, with granting a variance is that it's not in contrary to the public interest. Essentially, we're saying that the large amount of landscaping will look out of place and artificial due to the size of the project and the native terrain and vegetation that's currently out there. The owner is committed to mitigate impacts from the project by working with adjacent landowners that we've already discussed. We're also asking for a variance from the sprinkler requirement. The proposed project will not include any buildings, and the intent is to minimize disturbance and maintain native and drought tolerant grasses throughout the site. The owner is committed to working with the local weed district to establish a weed management plan in an effort to mitigate any invasive species, and also included in the reclamation plan will be the opportunity to reseed the area with native, with native grasses. The second criteria to consider under the variance is that the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in an unnecessary hardship. Staff recognized, the project site is large and is uncommon for industrial and commercial development that's typically considered under the zoning regulation. Staff recognized that the intent of the code was not to apply the landscaping standard requirements as they're written to such a large piece of property. Therefore, the literal interpretation of the provisions would require 60, I wanted to keep this in mind, that the literal interpretation of the provisions would require 64 acres of landscaping and irrigated area and over 8,500 trees to be planted across eight miles. Next slide. And then finally, the spirit of the ordinance must be observed and substantial justice done. It is possible to meet the goals of the ordinance without meeting the literal interpretation of the requirements. The owner is committed to mitigating visual impacts of the project by working with adjacent landowners. We plan to reseed with drought tolerant native plant, plants and a donation to the local tree fund and the creation of pedestrian friendly point of interest does allow, we believe, the project to meet the intent of the landscaping requirements in an alternative way. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to take another break. It's about 10 o'clock. When we return, we'll be hearing public comment with regard to the application. So let's take a five to 10 minute break.
Okay, at this time, the meeting will resume and we will be hearing public comment with regard to this application. We will first hear public comment from those people who support the application. Following that, we'll hear public comment from people opposed to the application. Following that, the applicant will then have an opportunity to provide rebuttal, evidence, or testimony addressing only the concerns that were voiced by opponents to the application. Now, an important point with regard to people coming up to testify, I'm going to ask you to identify yourselves by giving your name and your address, and also to spell your last name, as we had to do with Mr. Bronick there. That will be necessary so that Carol can properly record the comments and keep an accurate record of what's happening tonight, okay? So at this point, I'm going to ask-
Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to ask, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I have not yet closed the public portion of this meeting, and some staff members have advised me that before we begin the public comment section of this meeting, that, Nicole, could you come back forward, please? There's a couple of questions that the board members wanted to ask you.
Okay.
Thank you. And Julie, you have some questions?
Thank you. Hi, Nicole. I don't know if we could bring up the map, but the map that shows the layout. What I was wanting to clarify is that will the piece that is open without solar panels be open to wildlife, or will that in fact be enclosed?
Enclosed. No, the intent is to have, there's no perimeter fencing proposed around the entire project site. The area that surrounds Little Basin Creek will remain open.
Okay, but in the middle there, they'll be able to come through there, or they won't be able to come through there?
Yep.
They'll be able to. Do you know how many acres that leaves open for the wildlife?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't. Do we have that? I don't think we've-
Thank you. And then my other question was, I saw in some of this stuff that was in our packet for review that somebody put together a frequently asked question flyer, and it said, "Why did they choose the South Butte for this project?" It said that they wanted to be located in an area of Butte targeted for industrial usage, but in the testimony tonight, I just want to make sure that what I understand is actually you chose this location because of its location to the substation and the data center. Is that correct? Because in this that was given to me, it talks about that it's an industrial area. It doesn't mention that there's a substation or the proximity to the data center. Because I think there's been a lot of questions as why here? Why not out at, you know, Silver Bow at the hub? And so I just want to clarify that before we go forward, why.
Zach, would you care to address that? It seems like you have that information. Whoever can best answer that question.
Maybe just for clarification, the question is, just to confirm that the why of the location is the, yeah, that is an important factor in the location, is the proximity for distribution to any substation of that size for what we're producing, and having a substation connected to the grid with that capacity. But also the median adjacency to Atlas Power is important because it is going to be one of the larger consumers of electricity. But you have heard testimony here tonight that it does produce more, and that's going to serve all of the Butte community. But without that substation, without that transmission line, there's not very many locations that have that available.
Okay. And then my other question, just real quick, what I wanted to know about was the solar panels themselves. Do you have numbers on average of how many get damaged throughout a year on average, and how many will actually end up in our landfill, or how those ones that are damaged will be disposed of? You testified a lot about, you know, when you decommission it, what happens. But I'd like to just know in reference, how many are going to end up going to our Butte-Silver Bow landfill?
I'm going to ask Nathan Bronick to come up and answer that. He's-
Okay, if not previously testified, so could you identify yourself and spell your last name, please?
Yeah, Nathan Bronick, same spelling, B-R-O-N-E-C on that. And as far as damaged panels, from a lemon factor, they're very limited. There's really high testing standards from the factory. They're not sending out damaged panels, you know, because it goes through a lot of test process in the factory itself. And then throughout the years, typically you might see some hot spots, and that rate is like, I don't have a good number off my hand, but it's not a substantial amount that you're going to see. And as far as hail, these panels are rated to take hail strikes. They're actually tested for that. The testing process is they shoot like a golf ball-sized piece of hail at it and see how it holds up. And so from past projects that we've worked on, when there is hailstorms, we've only seen a couple panels out, thousands of panels that are damaged from hail. So we don't expect a tremendous amount before that decommissioning process to have a lot of landfill impacts, so.
Okay, and I have two more questions, and then I'm done, I promise. Just the location of this is not really typical for a solar farm, correct? I mean, usually you don't see them within the city limits. They're usually located 25, 30 miles radius from a community. So is, I mean, how do you, how do other communities that have located them within a city limit, if there are some, how do they mitigate the impact to the residents?
Yeah, so we've actually done probably three or four projects now that are within city limits. The biggest one was at Richland, Washington, called Horn Rapids Solar there. And a lot of that was, the mitigation was just offsets and things like that. It was next to, you know, a lot of adjacent agricultural land and stuff with some residential. So it's kind of the same aspects as here, and a lot of that. There, we didn't have any view shed requirements or anything that we'd have to meet, so.
Can you tell me the size of that project?
That was a 10-megawatt AC size, or DC size on that. And it was located in Richland, Washington, with a co, basically co-located next to a battery plant. We are looking at several other projects right now across the US. One of them, you know, I can't mention too much with NDAs, but it is a 150-megawatt plant right out of Bellingham, Washington. It's about 10 miles outside of town there, kind of intermixed with a lot of adjacencies to residential there. And again, there's not a huge amount of visual zoning requirements as far as that impact. But we are working kind of the same way that we are here, where we're trying to work with the people that could be impacted with that to shade and screen it, so.
Okay, and then my last question, you actually touched on the battery facility. I know that that's not part of this project, but is that the natural next step? If this were to go through, they would need storage for this electricity? Or is that not something that is even on anyone's radar for long-term planning for the site itself?
Yeah, it kind of varies, you know. Right now, we're not even considering that. When you start looking at battery generation and stuff and needing that, you're really looking at spots where the peak energy of that area, or who you're selling to, isn't able to consume all that. So it's when you have an excess amount of energy that you need to store in order to, or you basically either store it, or you don't even push it back to the grid. Given the proximity to other large industrial users and stuff, during the peak output time of the array, we're not estimating any time where we're going to be over-generating the grid capacity. And so therefore, we're not really interested in a battery plant right now, so.
Thank you.
Do any other board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Collins.
I don't know who to target these questions to. I guess I'll just ask, certainly. You know, it's kind of hard for me to get on board, especially being a Butte guy. I've been here all my life, I'm very passionate about it. Butte's been screwed a lot.
Please restrain yourselves.
In our current, you know, political climate, I know there's a lot of incentives for clean energy, and I'm all for it. But I would like to know, you know, at least a little bit about how much Butte's going to benefit. Tax-wise, I know there's a lot of incentives for y'all to do, you know, put this power plant in and stuff, but, you know, there's nothing even remotely been said about the benefits for Butte as a tax, you know, taxes coming in for our community. And, you know, it's kind of hard. We had a case here, battery storage case, and, you know, they said that it was 18 to 21 million dollars, and blah, blah, blah. And they didn't say over the life of the project. So, you know, people thought, oh, yeah, man, that's, but it paled the mine on a yearly basis. So, you know, that's something that I really, I would really like to know. You know, there's just so much money involved in this. It's just unfathomable for any of us to understand. I'm just going to put them all out here, and you can figure out who. I just wanted to know if the ranch is planning on still running cows through that open area that's left there? How many acres? I know John's been feeding elk for years there, and they still need to eat. So, you know, I'd kind of like to know what's going to happen there, if the cows are going to compete with the elk. And then I'd like to know what medium voltage is, just for my own information. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. So when we talk about voltage with electricity, you got low voltage, which is kind of up to like 480 volt. So that's what you see commercial, like in buildings, everything else is kind of low voltage. Then we move into medium voltage, which goes up to 64.5 KV, so kilovolts there. And that's what you would typically see campus distribution systems, neighborhood distribution systems. So like Butte Tech, they probably have like a 12.47 distribution system. We're going to be at 34.5, which is a pretty common one for that. And so that just means that, kind of that voltage there. And then when we talk high voltage, that's when we really start talking long call transmission. Probably the most common one around here is a 500 KV line. And that's what runs, you know, by Drummond there, all the way out to the East Coast. And so that's, anything above like that 64 KV is high voltage, so.
Okay, that leads me to one other. You're going to have step-ups, stepped-around transformers in that area, if there isn't already?
Yeah, so the way the distribution system's going to work is, at the panels will produce DC power. They'll go into the inverters, and at that point, there is a step-up transformer, where it goes to 34.5 KV, at which point that goes to the substation at the site, and then that is stepped up to whatever the transmission, existing transmission lines are. And off the top of my head, I don't know what that voltage is. I know it is a high-voltage line that is existing that runs out to that substation.
So is there any noise or other impacts associated with the transformers?
No, no, it's the same kind, it's actually quieter than the inverter fans itself. So it's going to be less than that 67 decibels, so. And it's all kind of enclosed with the inverters.
Thank you, Mr. Bronick.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, I'm going to answer, try and answer your benefits question. I think we've talked about the overall investment in the project, and it was going to be a point of rebuttal, but I'll at least give us some more of what, you know. It's the $250 million total. Out of that, 50 million is going directly into the wages that are going to be paid for the 150-plus people that build this. We've done economic analysis through the Common Development Software called Jobs EQ, which uses Bureau Labor Statistics for specific industries that have looked at this. It not only shows what the direct benefits are to the community, but it also calculates the number of indirect and induced jobs because of all of the services, materials, and demands that that sort of a construction workforce brings to. So in addition to the 150 that we have, that we know it's going to take to build this site, it will create another 50 additional indirect and induced jobs, which will bring in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 million dollars a year in just economic activity for this area during the construction period. I know there's been a lot of emphasis talking about, well, it's only eight to 10 jobs, and that's true at the solar field. But they're good-paying jobs in an emerging field, and the same software identified that those eight to 10 jobs will create about four and a half to five million dollars a year in additional economic activity. That's just the direct indirect induced labor and economic activity numbers. Relative to the solar, again, you asked about the taxes. That ground is currently taxed at the agricultural rate, which is 2.16% by the state of Montana. We are not going to do the calculation on this until we get to a final stage, but solar is taxed at 6%. So you're talking almost a three-fold increase in the taxable value that will be coming back to Butte-Silver Bow. But I might also add that it's very important to talk about the question on why this was located here, and you're right, it's way more than just it being close to an industrial area. There's no other place we can build this project for the reasons we're building it initially, for the data center, and that's where the real prize is. And so you're talking about another 100-plus jobs, which will generate a similar number of those indirect and induced jobs during the 18-month to two-year construction period. You're also going to talk about 30 to 35 permanent, high-paying, high-tech jobs in the high-compute industry. This isn't Bitcoin. We're moving from Bitcoin to Ethereum for a time, and then it will be high-performance computing, which is a big part of the future of high-tech jobs. And so it'll be 30 to 35 high-tech jobs created when we make that transition. Taxes, I can tell you a little bit more specifically about what sort of benefits we're going to see from the data center portion of this that becomes possible with this project. When the former owners of the data center purchased the old MSC site, the first year they paid their taxes, they paid Butte-Silver Bow $84,000 in taxes. After we completed the data center improvements, the first year after those were completed, they paid $1.9 million in taxes, more than 20 times of an increase. It's revenues that go to the county, that go to that Economic Development District out there to help drive and bring additional investment into that area. This proposed expansion is going to be as big of an investment as the previous investment, and so we're confident that we're going to see another very significant increase in the taxes, and again, all the benefits that come from those jobs, so.
Mr. Schaefer?
Follow-up question from Mr. Vincent. Mr. Vincent, when you talk about the tax money that has gone into that Economic Development District, does this project plan on tapping those funds to build this solar farm?
No, we don't. In fact, it's, the solar farm is outside of the targeted Economic Development District, Mr. Schaefer, and so that money will go directly to the county, so.
Any further questions? Okay, Mr. Vincent, during the break, you asked if somebody else could testify by phone because you thought that we still allowed call-ins, which of course was the case during the pandemic. Who is that individual?
I have an individual who is an adjacent landowner out there. He's a former legislator, local business owner, and he also happens to hold the grazing lease on the Gosden McDermott Cattle Company. Mr. Max Yates. And he asked if we could call him and put him on speaker, so he could speak in support of the project.
So there's two ways we can do this. I don't know if we're set up to allow call-in testimony, are we, or not? So, Mr. Yates, I'm going to close the public testimony, the public part of this meeting, but I can do it with the exception of Mr. Yates, if he's prompt about getting whatever he wants to say written down and submitted within a day or two.
I think that's fair, Chairman Wing. I'll see that he gets it to us, to you all by tomorrow.
Okay. So he can do that, otherwise, when everybody has commented, the public portion of this meeting will be closed. With the exception of Mr. Yates getting his-
And Chairman Wing, there's one other person who was planning on being here tonight. He's not an adjacent landowner, but he had his back go out on him, and so he was going to call in too.
I'm sorry, who is he?
Former Chief Executive Don Peoples, and the CEO of Murdy and MSC. Wanted to be here tonight too, but thought he could call in, so.
He thought he could call in also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, we want to get everything we can with regard to information concerning this matter. So the two exceptions will be, Mr. Peoples can, if he can do it in short order, like tomorrow. And Mr. Yates can, if he can do it in short order by tomorrow. They can submit their written comments. And then, if it's not done tomorrow, then we won't hear him.
Absolutely understand, Chairman Wing, and appreciate your flexibility.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to hear the public comments, and once again, when you come up to speak, please identify yourself by giving your name and address, and spell your last name for the record. Dr. Cole, your last name will be easy.
Jesse Cole, C-O-L-E. I live at 510 Hummingbird Lane, so I'm not directly next to the project. I have an expansive view of the project, I'm on the southwest corner. My comments are simply, I'm not really concerned about the global warming or green energy part of this. That's purely selfish. So my feeling is, is that land is privately owned, it is zoned for development, it will be developed. And my own personal preference would be to have a solar panel farm there with no houses and lights on it versus a housing subdivision and a bunch of industrial enterprises. Because I think that will maintain the character of the area more than not giving the special use project and then seeing 50 or 100 houses or more being built. Because Butte now is a bedroom community of Bozeman and Helena, and that's not going to stop, I think, in the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cole.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is, for the record, my name is Jackie McBroom, that's M-C-B-R-O-O-M. My office is across the street, it's 156 West Granite, but I am from Great Falls, Montana. But I represent the Butte workers here, the electricians, and I'm also here to stand in front of you to represent the building trades. Central Montana Building Trades Council wanted me to come before you to support this job, and it's going to be a lot of union jobs. Mr. Travis has committed in the past to sign PLAs on his last project, which was $100 million. It was built with all Montana contractors and more than 50 union workers. Their commitment to the PLAs with all of the trades and to make those jobs union is what we requested for our support. I would also like to say that this, as said in the past, and I will keep it short because they pretty much went over everything that I was going to talk about. You know, this plant is going to be the energy producer, and we need to be the leaders of change. Montana is losing its coal-fired plants. Those are going away. Stacy Yates is a personal friend of mine, he's a business manager over in Coal Strip. They're going away. We need to have something that can ease the usage of electricity for Butte. This plant, if it's built out here, this solar project will help do that, and will help facilitate that. When that goes away, the project, or excuse me, the electricity that we're actually purchasing from that Coal Strip, you know, the coal plant, we're not going to have that anymore. We're going, you know, your bills are going to go up. And as they have stated before, this electricity will stay here in Butte. RAC is committed to purchasing power, and we're in full support of it. So I'll make it short again, like I said, and ask that you support this project. And I also, I'd like to state that we represent the boilermakers, the plumbers, Local 44, the linemen, operators, the carpenters, the ironworkers, the laborers, and ourself, the electricians in this area. It's several hundred families that are impacted, and they'll be able to work at home and stay at home for four years. It's almost four years total project that people will be able, and I don't know if you guys have ever traveled. I've done a lot of traveling in my time, and it would have been really nice to have a project of this caliber in my area, so I could have stayed at home and not traveled so much. Thank you so much for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, thank you for being patient tonight and staying around for us. I'm the landowner and the applicant, and just wanted to say that, over the years, family ranches are just kind of going away, and, you know, the time to change has come around. I was kind of faced, you know, with a couple options of a few things of what to do, and I could have went subdivision and put in a bunch of houses, and that wasn't too appealing. I didn't really want to go that way, and I started looking at solar around 2014, and kind of started putting this project together, and kind of partnered up with Rick in about 2018, and we kind of moved it forward to this. And, you know, I've been a good neighbor to a lot of my neighbors, and, you know, a lot of them are good friends and good supporters, and the ones that, you know, feel we've misinformed them, you know, we've had several open houses to let them come to, and we tried to explain the project to them. And so, you know, moving forward, we just want to be as good a neighbors as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's John Milanovich, 2204 Oregon Avenue. My family has 120 acres just south of the McDermott property. It's in a rise in support of the special use permit. Coincidentally, I was asked to help work on some of the analysis of this project, or this is kind of a portfolio of projects, and I got involved in it maybe six months ago. And what I think's very interesting, there's obviously two real concerns about the solar project. One is wildlife, and one is view. And I hope you've seen from the great engineering team that was here, the mitigation aspect, and hope to work, you know, I think that their, the willingness to work with next, with property neighbors speaks volumes. But the economic impact is what I think really drives the support of this project. It's not, in my opinion, the impact of the solar field itself, although that is spectacular, and again, it's going to provide great jobs for Butte. The impact is really with Atlas Power. If that is successful, and that is an if, but if it is successful, Butte has an opportunity to have a future of economic growth, the world- to have a future of economic growth with real high-tech jobs that come with high compute. What is high compute? That is machine learning and artificial intelligence, these things you hear about. That sounds scary, but in reality, it's just looking at data, right? And that is the industry of the future, and Atlas Power is real. The revenue generation there is spectacular and real. The ability for that to be leveraged into a real economic driver for Butte is real. This is a key component of that. I hope that that's why I rise in support. Obviously, this is a first step, it's important that everyone's concerns are heard, but I think that, you know, I wanted to get that big view out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Bartolletti, 1521 Beacon Road, B-A-R-T-O-L-E-T-T-I, a lot of vowels. I don't want to belabor the point, I'd like to leave my speech here if I could enter it. I'm a neighbor, and I probably have the best view of anybody. I have 120 acres, and I'll be looking at all of those, I imagine I'll see 700,000 of them. John has been a great neighbor, and I disagree vehemently with Dr. Cole professionally. I am really frightened of what's happening in this planet. I don't think the reservoir filled this year, and I don't think this is the first time. I think we're at the tipping point, and I think we need to do something, and if I have to look at these panels day and night, I could care less, because what I think really matters, what's in it for us, it's our children and our grandchildren. And you look in the forest, you talk to anybody that spends any time in the wilderness, in the mountains, they'll disagree about politics, about gender, they'll disagree about guns, but it's unanimous that our state's a mess, our forest's a mess, we're losing our fish. Thank you. I strongly, strongly urge you to back this project.
Thank you, Mike.
My name's Jay Fortune, 116205 Starlight Road. I've been in front of you guys a lot of times. I was in front of you guys six months ago, asking for some of the same things. We did a project on Harrison Avenue next to Staples. We dumped five million dollars in that project, it's about done. You know, what it does for us, it creates construction jobs. You might only say, well, it's only a few jobs. Well, I got 25 people that work for me. Tyler has, I don't know, 10, 20 people that work for him. It's creating work for us, it's creating work for the future, for my kids, Justin's kids, you know? I mean, if we don't continue to try to strive and keep adding growth to this community, our kids are going to move away. We won't see them, they won't be here. This green energy is going to bring how many businesses here? I remember starting out at the hub that you mentioned. I live at Buxton. I look out my front windows, and what do I see? I see ASME, REC, I see FedEx. It's lit up like the moon. You don't even pay attention to it, you don't even see it anymore. I mean, I get where people say, well, have it in front of your house. Well, I got that out there, but I built the first building out there, Sea Cast, very first building. Since then, I've built Old Dominion, FedEx, Wausau, the list goes on. I'm doing another project out there, same thing's going to happen here. That's what we want, you guys. Let's not drive these guys away, let's keep these guys, let's keep the girls going. So your kids, my grandkids, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name's Joe Willauer, W-I-L-L-A-U-E-R, 65 East Broadway. I'm the Executive Director of the Butte Local Development Corporation. On behalf of my board, which is composed of community leaders and business leaders throughout Butte, we stand here and support this evening. We already submitted testimony, and it's been a long evening, so I will be very brief. The BLDC is the Lead Economic Development Organization for Butte. We support projects that create jobs, leverage investment, and help move our economy forward, which is why we are here this evening. As others have mentioned, green energy is very much our future, and we have been proud in the last year to be able to stand in support of additional green energy projects, including the potential hydrogen project that would be cited potentially in town. We understand the impacts that this has for the tax-based job creation, the ancillary jobs that would be created at the nearby facility, as well as the additional power that we heard this evening would be going back into businesses and homes in Butte, and the direct investment of the solar project, around $250 million. Number of union-scale construction jobs, two-year development timeframe, permanent high-paying solar jobs after completion, and the increased property taxes is why we're here this evening. We encourage your support of this project, and thank you for your time tonight. Good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Evan Barrett, B-A-R-R-E-T-T, live at 807 West Silver in Butte, retired there, kind of. I first want to take a second and thank you for your commitment to public service. I mean, we're all here with you, but you do this all the time, and we appreciate what it takes to be a good public servant, we appreciate what you do. I'm here in support of the project. My background includes 18 years as Executive Director of the Butte Local Development Corporation, and eight years as the Head of the Governor's Office of Economic Development. In those roles, I've spent a great deal of my professional life assisting in economic development that creates jobs and growth and tax-based growth to support the advancement of Butte and other Montana localities. We're looking not just to the present with our economy, but to the future with our economy. I've also had the responsibility to set economic development policy, that policy that enforces the kind of development that sustains the community and sets the community up for long-term growth and development. I've also been deeply involved in advancing renewable energy development in Montana. As a Governor's Chief Economic Advisor, I helped shape the state's policy that supports long-term renewable energy growth in anticipation of the inexorable movement away from fossil fuel energy. A decade back, I helped construct our property tax incentives to advance renewables such as wind and solar and geothermal and hydro and hydrogen too. It is the policy of this state in recognition of where this world is going and the world with the climate change we have and with the dangers and the dangerous impacts of fossil fuels. The marketplace is speaking, fossil fuels are dying. That's not a public policy issue, that's a market issue of the economy. And as that fossil fuel goes away, it has to be replaced with something, with green energy. Some people think we should hang on to every last ounce of fossil fuel activity in Montana. Well, it's heading the other direction, and it isn't going to change. And so if we want to have a future in this community that is related to energy, and energy's always been an important component of our economy in this community, because starting with 140 years ago, energy was needed to extract minerals from this earth and to process those minerals, and that energy was where we could get it at that time. It used to be burning logs in open pits for smelting here, but it eventually found, we ended up with Montana Power and hydroelectric dams and coal-fired generating and everything else, and now we're big time on that stuff. We've always been dependent upon energy, and because of that, we have a huge energy infrastructure in Butte. Just like the interstate highways and the railroads, our infrastructure that supports our economic growth and our future, the energy infrastructure, the transmission lines, the substations and the like, as well as natural gas lines, those are the things that provide us with economic opportunity, allow us to have, to be able to host growth here that other places cannot host because they don't have the infrastructure. So we need to keep working and taking advantage of that and working, moving forward on this green energy development. Currently, we're on a bridge that moves our nation and our state from fossil fuels to new technologies such as hydrogen, and so we need to be open to moving, in fact, we should be active in supporting the movement from traditional energy sources to new green renewable energy sources, and we have the infrastructure to allow that. This project is an important part of that movement, a movement we need to be supporting if we're going to have a community that can be competitive in the future economy. I can assure you, as an economic developer for 25 years, people will be asking not only what's the price of the energy, but is it green? Because they're all, corporate America is very concerned about climate change and the impacts on our earth, and so they're going to be looking to locate where it's clean and green. Individuals who can now operate outside of their home environment remotely are going to be looking for places that are clean and green. If Butte is going to have an economy that faces the future, we need to grab onto projects like this. Our identity as a community will be much better in terms of it being an attractive community for growth. For those reasons, I support this project and support the variance or the special use permit. I also submit, in these days, when it's 90 degrees plus here and there's massive forest fires such as in my hometown of Red Lodge, that we need to play a role as a community. Every individual citizen and every community needs to play a role in addressing climate change. This project does that. And finally, let me say in relation to all those opposing this project, that I understand their concerns. Every project has a NIMBY, a not-in-my-backyard component, and the concerns of folks that are nearby projects, their concerns are very legitimate. You know that, you deal with it all the time. It is up to public bodies such as yours to help address the issues by putting appropriate conditions on the approval of a project. If you think something needs to be done to improve this project and make it work, then ask the developers to do that, because so far, they've demonstrated a willingness to do what's necessary to make this project work for the economy, but also for the people. So I urge you to go ahead and support this, I recommend you consider all these issues, and at the conclusion of your deliberations, approve the project, including any reasonable accommodations that you might feel are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Justin Fortune, I live at 96 Liberty Lane. I guess as the, I'll be brief because I think these guys did a good job with their presentation and covered a lot. I think we should commend them as the Commissioner of this district that they reached out to my constituents and made several attempts to let these guys know what was going on. I think the tax revenue speaks for itself, I think clean energy is the future, I think the wildlife impacts are minimal, and I think it's great that local companies and local figures like Montana Tech and RAC are on board, and I think you guys should be too.
Thanks. Lower the mic.
Good evening. I'm a professor at Montana Tech, but my name is Kumar Ganeshan, G-A-N-E-S-A-N, Ganeshan. Very strange name, but that's my name. I live in 3425 Burlington Street in Butte. Okay, I'm here to, actually, to start with support the project, and I'm actually going with our chancellor's letter that very clearly says how Montana Tech would benefit and what are the economic benefits for the Silver County. So I don't want to add more except that green energy, everybody said, even the people who are not willing to accept the project said they like clean energy, clean energy. I think this is one of the best opportunities for Butte to kind of consider this project and put Butte in the map for creation of green energy. And also, I just kind of looking at it, if you look at generating energy from natural gas, which is probably the best, it's about 10 times more carbon dioxide being created. If you look at the coal, it's about 20 times. So certainly, solar probably are the best way to go. There are, one thing I read very recently is that apparently you can increase the population of bees when you have a very big solar farm. This is not from me, this research has been done by the U.S. Department of Energy. They said very clearly that it increases the population of bees. But anyway, I think I support the project and our chancellor supports the project. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brian Rigby, R-I-G-B-Y, 3400 Hill, number 305. I am the president of the Iron Workers, Local 732. I'm a Butte native, I come from a construction background. I've seen a lot of benefits of it, it's given me a great way of living. I think when we see the term green energy, it really brings a lot with it. I think that it is something that can really give manufacturers something to look at and a reason to want to come into Butte. If this project takes place, I believe it could be the tip of the iceberg. This is really something that can change the way Butte operates. I am in favor of the special use permit and variance request. I feel that this would be an appropriate and consistent use of the intended lands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Thomas, and I live at 2500 Phillips in Butte, and first of all, I want to thank all of you. You guys gave me a permit to construct my building, the Staples Building, and add some office space onto that, and thank you very much, it's very much appreciated, and I hope I, I don't think you regret it, it's very much appreciated, and I think it's a good addition to Butte and great for myself and my business. And I hope you guys will give the same opportunity to this project. I have a selfish reason for supporting this project, is I have three children and I'm living in Butte, and I'm hoping that maybe someday they'll end up back here if there's some opportunities for them. And looking around the room, I see a lot of people here whose kids are not, they, we graduated my Montana Tech and we never see them again, and I'm hoping this project's not just going to create some jobs, but some real quality jobs. So thanks again, I can't believe you guys are here, it's almost 11 o'clock. You guys are crazy. I work for a living, but I get paid, so...
Thank you.
Thank you guys for everything.
Is there anybody else that would care to speak? Yes, sir.
Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Rex Leipheimer, 489 Wildrose Lane. I can't say anything tonight that you haven't heard 100 times, but I just want to drive home that these guys are taking one hell of a big risk, they're doing things that nobody else wants to do, and we can see why when we sit here and deliberate like this, but the capital investment that these gentlemen are making, the amount of work that they put in, the amount of work that their team has put in to answer all these questions, to meet with the community, to meet with the neighbors, is phenomenal, and I really believe that the whole project will be that for Butte. It just needs a chance, and the amount of money that they're spending, the tax base, the construction jobs, the long-term jobs, the high-paying, high-tech jobs cannot go unnoticed. We all understand the NIMBY effect and the process... We all understand the NIMBY effect and the process of having these solar arrays in someone's view shed, but I firmly believe, for the better and the greater good of the community, that this project should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would care to speak in support of the application? I'm not hearing anybody, I'll ask anybody that cares to speak against the application, please come forward and identify yourself, and once again, spell your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Cindy Perdieu-Dolan, P-E-R-D-U-E hyphen D-O-L-A-N. I live at 2810 Hannibal Street here in Butte. Just want to caveat, tonight I'm speaking for myself, as a former Butte Silver Bow Commissioner, not for my employer. I bought my house, I live at 2810 Hannibal, and I bought my house in 2001, and I live right next to the airport. And I bought my house with full knowledge of living near the airport, and knowing, for all intensive purposes, that I lived in the flight path of an airline coming in a couple times a day. And now, you know, smaller planes coming in at a regular interval, but I've gotten used to that and knew that when I bought my home. A lot of these homeowners tonight that you've heard again and again, do not, or did not buy their homes with the intent of living with the view shed of 700,000 solar panels. And they bought their home with a residential allotment and for that reason. So with that, I wanted to have these comments tonight. As a former Commissioner in Butte Silver Bow County, and economic developing folks have worked very hard to, in the creation of Teds and TBIDs, to bring new business to Butte, and that has been thrilling to watch as a former Commissioner, and working hard to create those industrial parks. And those are important to bring new business to Butte. This solar farm should be within the industrial park, and not in a residentially zoned area. I am not against solar energy, I believe in a diversified energy portfolio for private companies, Butte Silver Bow, and Northwestern Energy. However, to put a solar panel project in a 1,600-acre residential far, area is not right. These residents deserve better. They have worked too hard for their homes, their views, and their residential values when it comes time to sell. Please do what you can, and what you did weeks ago, for the Butte Battery Project, and please vote no. It's important for them, and it's important if your homes were adjacent as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Parvinen, I live at 279 Cotton Tail Lane, P-A-R-V-I-N-E-N. First thing I wanted to touch on, which she just kind of said too, was this really isn't about green energy, that could be built anywhere and have the same effect, this is a zoning issue about where we live. Me and my wife live there with our two kids, we're a corner property. Also, after hearing some of the testimony, I feel like if we're so hungry for change and growth, that we're even considering this, then I think we should be ashamed. Also, the characteristics that they were pointing out for the TED area, that's only a very small area that's adjacent to the solar farm. It doesn't have any of the characteristics of the surrounding area, as far as your guys' criteria of matching the characteristics of the surrounding area. They were really hammering that, that it's an industrial area in that TED area, that's a very small section touching the solar farm. Let's see. But with your guys' criteria, everything that I read about it, it is set up to protect the citizens. When it comes to a zoning change, line by line, every one of your criteria, it's set up in the best interest of the citizens, and I don't think we can look at anything here today and say that this zoning change would be in the best interest of the citizens. And also, don't be fooled by medium voltage, I'm a union electrician, I've worked on solar farms before, it is extremely dangerous. I feel like that might have got put out there, that it was a little bit better than high voltage, it's definitely not. I've worked at the solar farm at the end of the NCAP building, and there's nothing pretty about it, it's absolutely dangerous, so I just want to put that out there too. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lacey Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N. I live at 1128 East Second Street, I am in town. I don't, my parents have property that is two plots of land away from the proposed location. I don't stand to inherit the property, I don't really have any sort of personal invested interest in this, other than to speak on behalf of my parents, my brother, and the citizens of this community. I do have a question that I would like to pose to the applicants, I know that you guys were able to ask questions directly to them, am I allowed to do the same?
No.
Okay, so then I will pose this as a rhetorical question for you guys to consider. Has there been an independent environmental impact assessment done? And I mean independent in the way that the person posed with the assessment is not on the payroll, or directly affiliated, or stands to have any sort of financial gain from this project going through. And then I would also like to know what the environmental impact conclusions are, such from the construction of the project all the way through to the conclusion of it, assuming that it ends at the time the lease is up. And then also, I would like to pose the question as to who will be held accountable for any environmental impacts that arise during the duration of this 25-year lease, such as soil degradation, water contamination, wildlife displacement, and the health of the local residents. And then in addition, with the jobs that are going to be created, now, it's spoken that these 150 jobs or so will only be present for the first two years, and after that, it will be reduced to 10. My question would be, are there parameters in place in terms of the employment in the hiring process, if the employment would directly benefit those in the community, or if they would be outsourced from other places? I know that these 10 jobs that are proposed to be long-term are of a high-tech nature. Do we know for sure that that hiring process will entail specific criteria for that to be members of the community? And then also, for the projection of what would be the impact of the conclusion of the cleanup of this? After 25 years, what happens to it? What happens to all of the materials? These are all things that I think all of us here would like to know when we are in opposition This decision that you guys are making, it's been stated a couple times here, that this would be the closest solar farm to a residential area that's ever been done in the US. I would assume in the world, but could just be the US, that's totally fine. So this decision that you make right now is going to set the precedent, not only for the families that are directly affected now, but for the generations to come, and in seeing as how we have referenced other places, such as Richland, Washington, in terms of this, this case right here could then be referenced in other states, thus impacting other residents of other communities. So right now, this weight that is placed on you is a big one. Because it's become apparent that the zoning laws may not protect these residents, and that big money can speak louder than these laws that are in place, the residents that will be affected then have to rely on the character and the word of the investors involved. The main driver of this is a convicted felon.
Ms. Johnson, there's no need to do that.
I think, I understand, it's a Google-able thing, it's a thing that can be...
Please address yourself to the concerns that are before the board with regard to the application.
It is a concern, if the law is not going to protect the residents, and we have to rely on the character...
Ms. Johnson, I'm not going to allow you to speak further in this regard. You did ask some questions that I will ask the applicants to address and rebuttal, but we're not going to do any character assassination.
Okay, then I would strongly ask that you consider the precedent that you're setting here, because you are asking us to rely on something that isn't the law. Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Dr. Wendy Grace, G-R-A-C-E. I live at 197 Dry Bean Road, and I very much appreciate your time, I sit on the SARTA Board, I understand that it's a long night, and I want to make two comments that I think are novel, and haven't been brought up yet, but that I think deserve your consideration. The first comment I'd like to make is that I think that Butte is not going to be, is going to be subject to the same land pressures that the rest of Montana, and indeed, most of the West, have been seeing in regards to the COVID, right? Lots of people are moving out of high-density areas and into low-density areas, we see that in Missoula, we see that in Bozeman, and we're seeing that in Butte. All of the land around me, which has been there since before I moved here seven years ago, has all been bought up, which is concerning in some ways, but it speaks to the people wanting to get out of those cities and move west. And we're going to need homes, and we're going to need intelligently designed neighborhoods in order to do that. I'm a primary care doctor, my entire career has been protecting the health of people, and one of the best ways you can do that is with good neighborhoods, intelligently designed neighborhoods with walkable areas, places for kids to play, parks. We have this land available to us, and it's zoned residential, and it provides for that transition from town to rural that we need so desperately. And so if you set this solar farm here, and I am not against green energy, I drive an electric car, for God's sake, right? So it just needs to go where it is already zoned industrial, where it's an appropriate place to put it, where those services that it needs are already there. So you have to run a little more cable to get the electricity there. So what? Do it, it's worth it. It's the way to protect the growth of our town, we're in front of the wave, and we can, right now, decide to design our community intelligently, and for people, and for their health, and for healthy communities. And so I would strongly urge you to think about that. The second thing I want to bring up is, as, I am also the chief of the medical staff, I do not speak for St. James, these comments are my own, but recruiting is part of what we do, and recruiting people to a town that has a huge pit in it, that's the largest superfund site in the country, is extraordinarily difficult, right? And we have to overcome that. And we do it because the people here are awesome, and because the life here is awesome, and the outdoor opportunities are incredible, it's why we live here, we love it, right? But a town is its people, and if you can't recruit good people to this town to serve our people, I am very concerned about the health of our community going forward. And what I mean by that is, we don't have a pulmonologist, we don't have a renal doctor, we don't have, there's multiple specialties, I can go on, that we don't have, because it's so difficult to recruit to Butte. And if I now have to tell them, not only do we have the largest superfund site in the country, we also have this giant industrial solar farm in the middle of our town that nobody else in the country has, it's going to be impossible. And extend that out to all the rest of the professions, it's not just medicine, right? Your lawyers are older, they're getting older. Sure, it will benefit some construction people, and I appreciate that, I treat those same construction folks, right? But you are going to lose this ability to create a really incredible town with great growth potential, that people want to come and live in, if you locate this solar farm here. It needs to go where there is already an industrial designation, where it's appropriate for it to live. And so I very much hope that you'll consider not allowing this to go forward, and thank you so much for staying late tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Grace.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Carol Thoene, T-H-O-E-N. I live at 251 East Badger Lane. I have to let the, you all know that Matt Vinson came up and said that they sent out over 200 letters. My property, my east border, is the west border of this project. I was not included in that mailing. I have not had a single phone call, no one has come to my home, no one has approached me at all, until about 10 days ago, my neighbor sent me a little thing, including Vinson's letter. So I've missed two meetings already, which I find very suspect. I also would like to know if there's an environmental impact study done. I think it's important that we have one, if one has been done, I'd like to see a copy of it. I'd also like to say that the land on these slides and stuff appear to be rolling hills, that's not true. On my area, the lands have gullies that are enough where a herd of 80 elk can go from 75 feet off of my property, and they are disappeared in the gullies. There's tremendous deep gullies, there are tremendous rock outcroppings. If they're going to do anything, I would like to know if they're going to do anything to mitigate any of that land. Also, if they're going, what they're going to do with the rock outings, because my well is on a Fisher system, which is not an aquifer. If you start disturbing the rocks around, I could lose my well. With no well, you have no property. I've been hearing a lot about, let me see my notes here, about protecting all these businesses and whatnot. My feeling is that, for one reason, when Montana Power was mismanaged and had to pull out and sell, they also sold out all the hydro plants. You might not be aware that the water is still going through those turbines, but they are not generating power. That is green energy. That doesn't take a lot of, you know, coal or anything to do it, and we've lost that. They have hung on to them, they have not put them back into use. You also talked about the tax base, which is wonderful, Butte Silver Bow may get a million-plus in tax revenue, and they said it's going to go for economic development, more development. However, it will not help the common taxpayer, the landowners. We will get no relief from any of that, none. And so I think people should be aware of that, that we don't have that. There's a lot of questions that have been asked in the letters, and questions I have had about the intent, what they're going to do to the land itself to level it, as they were, to be able to put the panels up. I would respectfully request that the project managers of this answer those questions and get them back to us in writing, so that we can study them. I think it's very, very important, I feel that this has been put on kind of in a shady deal, without all of the people that are physically impacted. Most of our homes are our biggest asset, that's our retirements. Right now, last week, I put my home on the market. You say it's not going to affect it, it has already affected me. I have lost showings because of this project, on my property, because I am adjacent to it. And I think this is something that everybody should be aware of, that when you decide you're going to sell your property, you may not have a buyer for it due to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gary McWhorter. I have some comments, starting off. I'm probably the dinosaur in the room. As far as solar energy, it's my belief that it has some utilization in places, but I don't necessarily see the benefit everywhere that these people here are touting. As an engineer, though, I did have a question-
Pardon, sir. Could you address the board?
Okay, okay. Sorry. I understand that I can't, okay. But in comment, though, I will, I will state that there was stated that there was one overhead power line from the collector to the existing substation at a medium voltage that Todd asked of 34.5. Interestingly enough, that requires, what, 6,000 amps of current? Do you realize how much current that is and what size conductors that takes? They're going to lose 18 megawatts of power in conductor losses. That's an enormous loss for a project of this size. Notwithstanding that, though, I'll get on with the, with the information I wanted to share with you. First of all, even though I don't live on my property, which is out in Basin Creek, that doesn't mean that I won't be impacted. As I said, I live at 2200 Skyway, which is on a rise behind the Serbian church. Every morning, I get up, I make coffee, I drink a cup of coffee, I set at my kitchen table, I read the Bible and I read the standard. As I'm doing so, I quite often stop and contemplate what I'm reading. On my side, I have a window that I can look through out to the southwest. Guess what? Right now, I can see the beautiful drainage of Little Basin Creek. When this solar panel installation is built, I'm not looking forward to looking at this, what I consider ugly, display. Notwithstanding that being said, I do want to take umbrage with some of the statements made here, some of which were by Mr. Vincent, wherein he accused us opponents of, quote, "spreading misinformation about the project." It's my belief that Vincent and the proponents are guilty of that, or at least of being disingenuous, disingenuous and telling only partial truths. To that regard, as an example, this has been repeatedly touted by person after person about a 300-megawatt generating facility. This hasn't been clarified, and so I'd like to do so. In fact, it will not generate near that amount. First of all, as you might imagine, and I don't think anybody will disagree with, the sun doesn't shine all the time. If you look at the national data in Montana and Butte, the sun shines an average of eight hours per day throughout the year. A little more in the summer, a little less in the winter. So, at best, the array will generate some amount of power only about 30% of the time. Furthermore, if you look on the internet, the solar radiation curves that you can bring up are a bell-shaped curve that started zero, peaked up, and then dropped back to zero in the daytime, at the end of the day. Most of the time, they're well below the peak. The peak energy occurs for about one hour per day. At one hour per day, that's the time when they might be able to generate 300 megawatts of power. Beyond that, it will be significantly less. The proponent has stated that this will provide enough power to serve Atlas and also to serve other businesses and/or 40,000 homes. In fact, according to their infograph over there, and it's in Exhibit Q, they state the energy production to be 406,000 megawatt-hours annually. To put this into perspective, Atlas is stating that when they increase their business, they will have a load of 75 megawatts. This amounts to a power consumption of 657,000 megawatt-hours annually. That's based on 75 megawatts, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. So what this says is this project will only generate 60% of their power usage. That being the case, how is there much, if any, surplus power for the other stated benefits, such as other generic climate-conscious customers and into the system for Butte, Silicon, MRI, and other customers? I think it's sheer speculation on the part of the proponents that this installation will immediately make Butte a center for agricultural, agri-solar and other green-energy-minded businesses. One of the first attributes any new business will demand is a reliable power source, and this solar source is extremely unreliable. Any rain, snow, clouds, or dust will severely diminish power output and it is only available for a few hours a day at best. The proponents also state an economic benefit because of the 150 union jobs. I had first thought that this might not be true because Barnard Construction, their contractor, is from Bozeman. They have a webpage, if you look. They have 350 employees already on staff. So I questioned whether or not they would be hiring Butte locals or bringing their staff in from Bozeman. I understand from the union rep that they may have a usage agreement that they hire locally, which if it's true, is good. As they, okay. In addition, though, to that, all the panels come from China. The foundation steel comes from back east. Possibly the fencing that is going to be put up around various parts, that might come from Butte, but it might not come from Butte either. So some of the millions of dollars of economic input that they've talked about during this construction may or may not be there. One other item that I wanted to comment on, they claim that solar uses no water in comparison to carbon-based generation. In fact, any landowner can verify that windows get dirty and need to be cleaned. These solar panels are just big windows. They'll need to be cleaned. Looking on the internet, I looked at several manufacturers and they state solar panels need to be cleaned two times or more per year. That's because solar panels, at best, are only 20% efficient. And if they get dust or other foreign objects on them, their, their generation capacity goes way down. Now, the only reference to water that was made in the application was to the Butte Basin Creek Water Pipeline. They have stated that we're going to use that for fire suppression. Will they plan also to use this resource for panel washing? How much water does it take to wash 700,000 large panels? One million, 2 million gallons or more? I don't know. We in Butte have an annual issue with water availability. Every year, we go on odd-even sprinkling mandates, as well as times we can water. Is it appropriate for this usage possibly to occur and to impact that to the detriment of the rest of the people? When they do clean the panels, will they use detergents or other chemicals to help repel dust? If so, what pollution will that cause in the soil and resulting runoff into Basin Creek and Little Basin Creek? In the same vein, relative to potential pollution, they haven't stated a plan of disposal of broken or damaged panels. The staff report only states that, quote, "The disposal of solar panels and decommissioning plan of state is important to protect the public health and safety. Further research will need to be completed before determination on whether or not the Butte Silverland, Butte Silver Bowl landfill will be able to accept the disposal of broken or non-functional panels." I say that's kind of baloney. I looked on the internet and typed in solar panel toxicity. I got something in the range of nine million hits. I grabbed a couple of them and put in here. The first one was from Professor Lugin, PhD. Toxic chemicals in solar panels include cadmium telluride, copper indium selenide, cadmium gallium dicelenide, copper indium gallium dicelenide, hexafluorothene, lead, and polyvinyl fluoride. One of the most toxic chemicals created is silicon tetrachloride. The next one that I brought in, what happens when a solar panel breaks? Whatever is left of the broken panels is recycled scrap or put, put through a refinery disposal process. Broken solar panels are never left to be landfilled for future generations to worry about later. As I said, there were nine million hits related to, to this toxicity, and I just used those too. You can look at it and see several more if you wanted. I don't think further research is needed by the staff as to putting these broken panels into the landfill. I think the answer to that is no. Another claim is that if the site is cited, if the, if the project is cited, it will be one of the 10 largest solar projects in the U.S. I'm not sure that's much of a justification. To me, that's kind of the lemming approach. Since they're jumping off the cliff, when I get to the cliff, I will too. Vincent and the proponents have stated there will be, quote, "No significant diminishment of property values due to this project." Notice, they did not say there would be no diminishment, just that in their view, it would not be significant. I bet most landlords would agree that any loss of property value is unacceptable and One final thought, they're talking a lot about economics. I'm wondering, since, it doesn't seem to me that this project is economically justifiable. What plans do they have for some yet unnamed, unplanned installation? To me, it doesn't pass any cost-benefit analysis that I know of. I went to, again, to the website and looked at the Mid-C Hub. That's where bulk power is traded on the northwest. There were some 249 contracts signed last year to buy and sell power at an average value of just under $25 per megawatt-hour. Assuming Atlas could get that for their total annual production, they would receive, you know, the 2484 times 406,000, or about $10 million. That's a gross amount. That's an ROI of 4%. If you take in some of the labor costs for 10 employees and some other costs, that's going to go down. And the ROI on a $250 million investment is less than 3%. I don't see how that passes muster for most people starting a business. Given the scope of some of these problems and the lack of benefits, I strongly urge this board to deny this special use permit. And I thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Melissa Devine and I live at 58 Little Basin Creek Road. And I oppose this project. I moved here two years ago from Western New York, a union town where they gave corporate welfare to all these businesses that would come in and promise, bring these union jobs, they promised, and they never did. The union jobs were only to create the buildings or the facilities and then they left. And a lot of times, they outsourced those to Canada. They didn't put them in, in the state that, or the town that they said they were going to. And didn't they, they promised or they said that they might need a battery facility? Because when winter hours come, I also worked in the technology industry, and their database or their data center will work, but they're going to need to store that energy. So you're going to have to approve that, that battery storage facility for them. That's what they're going to need eventually because winter hours, they're only going to work from 8 to 5. Also, they mentioned that a Chinese server company is interested in coming to Butte. So they're going to have to expand on that area. They're going to have to expand on more energy because they're going to bring in another data center. So they're going to have to bring in another data center and then they're going to bring in another battery storage thing. Just a couple of things to consider, and I oppose this.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Yeoh, spelled Y-E-O, and I live at 100 Sweet Meadows Road. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this evening. The task before all of you is daunting as you decide whether to deny or approve the special use permit and zoning variance request. That decision may be among the most consequential you will make during your tenure of service on the zoning board and will have far-reaching effects on Butte and its citizens for years to come. I don't envy you having to make that decision, but I applaud your efforts in that regard and thank you. The 540-acre ranch that I own is small by Montana standards, but it's still a fairly large landholding in the south end of Butte, although nowhere near the size of Mr. McDermott's property adjacent to ours. Sweet Meadows Ranch has been in my family for over 100 years and it's never been able to support enough cattle to make a living, but we've always run a few head in order to maintain the agricultural classification of the land and be able to afford the property taxes with the ultimate goal of passing the property on to my two daughters and son-in-law and eventually to my grandchildren and their descendants. I rely heavily on my younger daughter and her husband to help operate the land as a ranch. Thank you, Russell and Holly. And we hope to continue to do that as long as we are able. However, since that way of life extracts a heavy toll on body, mind, and spirit, there may come a time when that is no longer feasible or possible. If Butte were to eventually grow enough in population to need more, need more space for housing, having our land available to possibly accommodate that growth should give pause to considering the approval of the special use permit with four tenths of a mile of solar panels right across the fence of my property. I don't believe that myself or my children will live long enough to see that growth happen, but I want my grandchildren and their descendants to be afforded the opportunity to develop the land as they see fit, especially if they are unable or unwilling to operate the land as a ranch. I will give you folks some photos that will show you how close the panels are to my property. Mr. Vincent claims that having utility-scale solar fields in close proximity to adjacent property does not affect that property's value. But I know I wouldn't want to live right next door if it came to pass that my descendants had to sell off some of the property for development. I certainly wouldn't want to see another Bozeman develop in our end of the valley. But I personally would rather see housing for families that come to Butte to work and live than a massive solar array that benefits only a few folks with lots of money. I understand that a lot of you living in the Basin Creek and Little Basin Creek areas would hate to see a large subdivision developed out here. But I ask, wouldn't that be the lesser of two evils? I feel that if the special use permit is approved, all the hard work we've put in on our ranch over many decades will have been for naught. And my great-grandfather's vision of the town growing to the south when he bought the place from the Milwaukee Railroad in the late 1800s will never be realized. A few additional comments, we do run a few head of cattle, currently only 20 cowcalf pairs. And at the moment, they are in the gulch directly adjacent to that property. I have concerns about what happens. I, it was stated that the, the perimeter will not be fenced. Well, as cows are wont to do, they may go over for a visit. You know, what happens if they, if they break into there? And then I also have a concern with the dispersal of weeds. You know, we fight constantly to try and battle napweed. We actually supported the Whitehall Project last year, buying several containers of weevils that eventually, hopefully, will do away with the napweed problem. You know, if you, if you disturb the soil, that's, that's a place where napweed thrives. So that's a major concern. So in closing- So in closing, I respectfully, humbly, and passionately ask that the zoning board adjustment deny the special use permit and zoning variance request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Larson. I live at 30 East Badger Lane on Little Basin Creek. And I am here at the moment. I recognize it is very late. I'm going to keep very brief. I appreciate the comments that were made with very many calculations of energy items that are involved in this. There's a lot of information been presented. I would like to represent the dozens, several dozens of people who came to this meeting out in the hallway who were not able to wait until 10:30 at night for the opportunity for the opposition to speak, who have all gone home. And I would like to represent them and myself and go on record as saying I oppose this project for several reasons that have been stated already. And I would appreciate your denial of that rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you keep popping up, and I want you... Everybody jumps ahead of you.
I'll be brief. My name is Erin Williams-Leber. I live on 540 Little Basin Creek Road. And I just wanted to reiterate my opposition and my family's opposition for this solar farm. This happens to be our back property line. So we just own 30 acres out there. We bought it, my husband and I worked extremely hard. We moved up to Butte 19 years ago and saved. We researched areas where we knew we'd want to settle. And we consciously bought out in this area knowing it was zoned for residential use. And we have, we've never inherited land. We didn't inherit money. Everything that we've worked for has gone into this property. We spray for weeds. And we constantly are putting our income into our property so we can give it to our kids. And I just feel that myself and my neighbors and all the other people in the community who have written letters, who don't even live out in our area, those voices need to be heard. I don't feel that. I don't understand why my property value and my way of life that I understood was going to happen when I moved out there has to change. For, I understand it's important to have jobs and money, and Mr. McDermott owns his own property. But it is zoned for residential use. I can't shoot an elk on my property out of season because that is the law. The law is currently that it's zoned for residential use. And we have to follow that, even if it's our own property. We have to follow those rules. And I just, I ask you all to please just listen to the citizens. These, the people here, they have nothing to gain. They have no, I mean, there's no money to be gained from these people. And there's all these citizens of Butte coming out to fight this because they care about their property and their land. And I just ask you to look at this picture. This is my 15-year-old son against our back fence. Those solar panels are predicted to be within 25 feet of that property boundary. And look at the east ridge. You can see this TED, this is way back here in the distance. So they talk about the kind of character of the TED. But look at all the other land. That's not the characteristics of this property. I walk and hike these roads all the time, and I see elk and moose and grouse and badgers. And I just don't feel that small corridor that they're proposing will be enough for those animals. And again, I have, Nicole mentioned she found five articles that say that solar farms do not decrease property values. Well, I found five that say they do. And this one's a very good one, from the Providence Journal from Rhode Island. And this is from another one in Massachusetts, saying that homes within a tenth of a mile will decrease on average by 7%. That's a large amount of money when you've soaked everything you have into that property and into that home. I just ask you to take that into consideration. We are not wealthy. We don't have some of the power that these people do. But we love South Butte. We love Butte. I mean, I'm never going to leave. But I just ask that you just take that consideration. And I understand jobs are important. But I feel like our community is also important. And I just ask you to take that consideration. So, thank you. Oh, my name, Williams-Leber.
If it sounds too good to be true, maybe it is. Carol Lubick, L-U-B-I-C-K. I live at 1333 Beacon Road. And when I was visiting with some of my neighbors about this proposition, one comment stuck in my mind. My neighbor said, "The trouble with Butte is anything goes." I would like to believe in Butte. I would like to believe in the planning board. I would like to believe in the zoning board of adjustment. But to approve such a gigantic solar farm in an area zoned residential seems beyond reason, beyond common sense. So, can I believe in Butte, or does anything go? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, good, almost good night. Doug Caldwell, C-A-L-D-W-E-L-L. I live at 812 Coyote Lane. And I wasn't going to write it down, but I couldn't remember. It'll be quick, I promise. A few things I picked up during this meeting. They talked, one of you, I couldn't see or hear back there very well, asked about if any of these farms were close to a town as this. And they said yes. Well, I like the whole truth. I like everything. We did a quick Google on it, and what they're talking about is a 20-acre parcel in Washington. That's a little different than 1,700 acres. Okay? Another question I have is the taxes. You know, Matt was up here saying, "Man, we're going to get all these taxes." But I also heard we're giving them a big tax break. Okay? Right now, I can't see where it's going to go till I go down the road. But I go out on my deck in the morning to watch Wayland Ranch is behind me, so I don't really have anything back there. I watch the elk, the coyotes, whatever. I have my coffee out there. Every day that that Bitcoin's running, I can hear the hum at 812 Coyote Lane. That's one thing. Can you imagine what the hum will be like when they get all this done? Another thing I didn't like was they were asked, "How many broken panels per year?" We didn't get a straight answer. We got some, a few, not very many. Okay, 700,000 panels? How many some? How many's a few? I'd like to know. All this talk, we had a bunch of union guys in here. I mean, I've been a miner my entire life. You know, it's support local, let's get these guys these jobs, and they need them. I mean, I understand that. But those guys, you didn't see one of them that lives out there, up here. And the other thing that got me, if we're doing all this local, why do we got China coming in here? Can't we get these things made in the U.S.? Why are we giving our money to China? That's just a question. And then the power that's supposedly going to go out, is that sold on the open market? What's the price? Nobody ever said that either. It could be anything. I know, for the first year, we went down to Texas during all that snowstorm. And some of those people down there were getting $8,000 a month bills. Is that what it's going to be here? Yeah, it was crazy amounts. I mean, they had to take them to court. Look it up, it's there. And then the other one, like I said, I like to hear everything. High-paying jobs. What's high-paying? You know, might be 10 bucks an hour, might be 15. Or is it 50? What's a high-paying job? And these tech jobs, are they going to be here in Butte? Are they going to be remote? That's all I got. Thanks for your time. Sorry we're so late.
Sure.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nicole Hanny, H-A-N-N-Y. I live at 106 Beaver Pond Road. I'm not going to say anything too much more, of course, than everybody else did. The one thing that I will reiterate is John has been a great neighbor, and everybody that's doing this have been great to me personally. So I have nothing against them for that. I have nothing against the project and projects coming to Butte. I do think that we need to look at the area, as everybody else has said, as where it needs to go. We have the mine that's up there that's hard, but it also produces how many jobs for this town? That's fine. We're proud of that. We're proud of our mining. I'm not saying solar is bad. I actually am very pro-solar. That being said, I don't think it needs to be south of town right there. Again, the reason why we have that spot is because they want it for the location of the Bitcoin. That's the main reason why they're picking that spot. So that, in that way, that's the reason why I'm saying I don't want that spot. Because I live there. I built four years ago. When I built four years ago, I set my house to look right where it's going to be set. I want you guys to consider that. And also to consider, I feed elk too. I have all the wildlife that's there that's going to be affected. But I will say, and I will reiterate, that they have been great to us in that aspect. But let's just talk about a different area. Maybe Arco. Maybe where the stack is over there, where you can't use the property. Let's talk about a spot, because I do think Butte needs economic. I do think that we need business. I do think we need jobs. I just don't think there's where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else that cares to speak in opposition? Okay. The applicant now has an opportunity to provide rebuttal testimony to the objections that were raised by the opponents.
Mr. Chair, members of the zoning committee, I'd like to say we're going to be brief in our rebuttal, but...
Take as long as you need.
This means a lot. I mean, I think, and we respect the views of the folks that have raised these questions. I mean, there's obviously some people out here who feel strongly. And they're good neighbors, they're good Butte residents. Some of them are really good at Google search. But I can tell you this. We stand behind the Cushing Terrill team and the Barnard Construction team and the FX Solution team that does this. I know there's questions about this. I'm going to touch on the rebuttals that I can hit. I'm going to turn over the technical questions to Alan, Zach, and Nathan. And I'm going to let Rick talk about the jobs questions on guarantees on whether these are going to be local or not. But before we get into this, because I think Rick will close after he answers the questions on the jobs, is I revert you back to the very beginning. We are asking you to look at all of the information that we put in our permit, and we know you will. And we know you will take into consideration the answers that we have already given to your questions as well as the ones that we're about to go through now. And we're not going to, we're not expecting, nor do I think anybody's expecting, a decision on this tonight. We want you to take your time. We've taken our time up to this point in the development of this project. And as we've already pointed out, there's a lot more to look at. We've got to go through a lot more steps. It would be a very short-sighted decision, in our opinion, to not allow us to be able to go through all of these all of these additional steps and find out exactly what all of the components are of this project. Now, that being said, we think that the permit that we have submitted is in full conformance with the zoning ordinance as well as in the spirit of the comprehensive growth plan. I mean, I might even start there. I like the idea of having open neighborhoods and places to grow and, you know, great places for recruitment. That's why we have a comprehensive growth policy that this staff here put a heck of a lot of time into, that you guys considered and listened to, that hundreds and hundreds of community members from all over Butte, Silver Bow County weighed in on. That's why we have a comprehensive growth plan. And that's, I think, valuable to point to, yes, maybe in 20 years or the next time we do a comprehensive growth plan, maybe we want to look at other areas. But the one that we just completed last year states that the exact area we are looking at is for working lands and to foster economic development, and it is not identified as a primary area for residential growth. I just want to reiterate that point. I think another point that came up, it came up a number of times, and it's probably a technicality that you guys already know, but I still think it's worth pointing out. There was a lot of reference to zoning change and what the standards are of having to meet a public necessity for a zoning change. We are not asking for a zoning change. We are asking for a special use. And that's not a standard that has to be met. We feel we are meeting all of the standards that are necessary for you guys to consider and hopefully approve our special use permit. I'm going to move through here a little bit more into the ones that I'm going to talk about a little bit. Mrs. Thorne, I do show, and I do, and there was a couple other residents here that I will acknowledge. They were on our list. We know that we mailed the letter to their address. We mailed them bulk. So there are people that immediately throw away bulk mail. There's also the possibility that maybe all of those letters didn't get delivered. But we did have her on our mailing list of folks that went out. I do think it's worth talking about because at least we felt that it was important to prioritize the adjacent landowners as well as the area landowners that have a view of that area. And I would invite you guys to do your own analysis on this. And this is only specific to the letters that were submitted by the deadline. There were 117 total letters. Many, many, many of those were duplicates and form letters. We looked, there's 78 households represented in those 117 total opposition letters. Only 28 of those households are within the actual project area. And only six of those letters of opposition are people that are directly adjacent to the property, all of whom we heard from tonight with the one exception of... Well, actually, no, we heard from her tonight, too. So that's just something to consider. We had a lot of supporters that stood up tonight, and a lot of them were adjacent landowners. We also had a lot of supporters that were out in the hallway that had to go home because, I know, we told them it was going to be a long one, but we're still going. So there was a lot of supporters that were out in that hall that wanted to get up here and talk that couldn't stand. A lot of them were adjacent property owners. So I just want you to take that into consideration, too. Keep going through here. I can come back to that property survey just to talk about the significance. We did five, and we, again, we have a professional team here. Not to say that, you know, the information you find on Google is not true. We have a professional team that knows exactly what to look at and how to analyze it. We looked at what we felt were the five best real estate-based or appraisal-based surveys that were done nationally. Out of the five, four of them showed that there was no change whatsoever. The reason we said no significant was that the one that did showed a 1.7% decrease in property value. But there was a caveat, because it was done in a very highly densely populated area, and I believe Rhode Island. And they said, "Be careful about extrapolating the information that's in this survey to any other place in the United States, particularly rural areas." And so we included it because it was a very good survey. But there was that caveat, and it was 1.7% reduction. I can't speak to any of the other ones that have been brought up. Weeds, Mrs. Yeoh talked about weeds. We have got a weed control plan both during construction. We will decontaminate any construction vehicle that comes in there. We have a, one thing I'll say is John McDermott, and I'm a reclamation specialist by training and was in charge of oversight of the Butte Hill Superfund sites for many years, which I think we can do better there with the weeds since I've left. But John McDermott does an impeccable job of weeds on his property. So it's our obligation and our duty to keep it that way. He, I just, I've never been on that big of a swath of ground that has that few weeds in it. And so tracking weeds from John's property onto other properties is not going to be a problem. We're putting a premium on making sure we keep it that way. And we have a reclamation plan that includes native species. And we have a reclamation plan that includes native species, wildflowers, grasses, other forbs and shrubs that will, in a lot of ways, with getting a lot of the activity off of that ground, there's a reasonable likelihood that we could improve what's growing out there right now underneath these solar panels. So weeds will not be an issue. We've already engaged the Butte Silver Bow County Weed Department on this. Cattle and fences, that was another one that Ms. Yeo brought up. There's no, there's not going to be an exclusionary wildlife fence all the way around. There is a fence. The existing fence that John has will stay there. We're only putting the exclusionary fencing up around the panels, panel arrays themselves, but the whole area is going to be fenced to keep property safe and surrounding property owners safe. I will point out that while I'm sure they have the height in that proper, in that photo, that one photo that was submitted in the things of the 12.6-foot solar panel, that was inaccurate. That is not, they're not going to be straight up and down, and they're not going to be that close to anybody's property line. 25 feet is how far we put the setbacks according to the maximum development. But we're confident as we learn more and we do more research on this and learn how we're going to develop this, that we can do a further setback, particularly in areas where we have adjacent property owners like the Leibers and the Parvenins who have since left. I'll reiterate those taxes. I don't know what's, I don't know where the information is coming from that we're asking for a reduction in taxes. That's just not true. We're going to pay the taxes that are defined by state law. And those on the solar project are going to go right up here in this building. It's not in the TED. The stuff that's in the data center, which is within the TED, some of that will come up here, but a lot of it will stay within the targeted Economic Development District for additional development there. So I just wanted to say that. With that... You know, I heard a lot of talk about, you know, loving the views of the mountains and the Lady of the Rockies and all of that, that stuff. That's not going to change. These are 12.6 feet high. That's even, that's lower than the roof on a single-story modular home. Yes, it's going to be a very different foreground that you're looking at. We're working to address that to the best of our abilities and flexibilities within the project. But we are not going to be, I mean, you will still be able to look at those gorgeous highlands and the hillsides and the east ridge. It's not going to affect those kind of views. And the other thing that I wanted to touch on was... The lesser of two evils. That's subjective in the way that it was talked about. The land being subdivided versus a solar array being the lesser of two evils. That is subjective, but I will say that you already heard a specific comparison between the heat island effect that is created by these solar panels being less than the heat island effect that you would expect of a similar subdivision area because of the black roofs and that. You're going to see a lot more impacts from a densely populated subdivision if it were to put at that property, which it is zoned to do, than what this is going to be. Yes, they're going to be different, but there's going to be more of them. More impervious area, more runoff, more lights, more traffic, more disturbance of the ground, more uncertainty as to what the design of those homes are going to be, let alone the neighbors that are going to move into them. It was said before that this project, whereas it's not perfect, show me a perfect project. I think this project has a lot of potential benefits for this community, and it's in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the growth policy. And it has got a good piece of allowing a good certainty for the future of that area down there. And again, we're asking you to let us succeed on this. Take your time to deliberate, look over the facts, ask questions, I mean, whatever. We're going to continue to meet with these landowners, even the ones who are opposed. We want to do this right. We need a chance to move forward. We have a lot, we've spent a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of energy to date. Rick's going to talk to you about the track record that he has as one of the most trustworthy businessmen I've ever worked for in my life. But he's going to talk about the jobs and the things that have gone on at the previous project. And we're going to do it the same way here. So any question about jobs or local property or local economic impacts and whether we're going to be farming these out, I'll let Rick answer those questions. But I think first, or next, I'll turn it over to Alan and Nathan and Zach to answer some of the technical points that were brought up in the comments. So thank you guys for your patience and your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to come up and kind of address some of the electrical comments that came up. So kind of the first one here, you know, we had heard a comment from the gentleman about the medium voltage being dangerous. And, I mean, it's electricity. It's dangerous no matter where it is. I think we're trying to be as responsible, and I would say that we're going to follow all the codes required to keep it as safe as possible. But that's not to say that you have to be extremely skilled to work on these, just like any other form of electricity. So it will say that the impact of medium voltage is actually really limited. You know, there's no exposed conductors or anything besides on the power lines. Everything is underground, you know, direct buried. So the shock hazard is low from that standpoint. The shock hazard at the panels, there's different ways that that can be mitigated too. I'll throw that out there, both from a safety standpoint and also a wildfire standpoint. They have things that we actually put on buildings that open up those panels and cause them from basically being in a series called rapid shutdown. So some of that safety stuff. The other thing, there's a comment about, you know, the hydropower, all the dams not producing power. You know, I just want to say that that's not the case. NWE actually owns a lot of those dams now. They bought them back several years ago. And as of, I think, May or March 21st of this year, the hydro capacity in Montana was right around 600,000 megawatt hours. Kind of what we're going is, we agree, hydro is a great baseload source. What we're trying to do with this project is really address that coal production power, which in the state is 1,000, 100, basically 1,000, 100,000 megawatt hours of production. So there's basically a big shortage there that is likely. In regards to the loss on the lines and the size that it is, yes, it is 6,000 amps the connection that will be at the substation. But this will be broken up into multiple runs to that substation. So the conductors are actually smaller than if you're running that in a single conductor cable. As far as the power production, it is very true. You know, the sun is only shining, you know, eight hours a day during the summertime, nine hours a day during the summertime. During the wintertime, it's less than that. And what I would pull from this is solar alone doesn't always meet the loads of the buildings. It always is looking at also having to pull in load from other things. So when we start talking about like Atlas Power being ran off a solar farm. So during the daytime, yes, but during the nighttime, they would also be having power purchase agreements either with hydroelectric or some other generate wind, you know, variable generation. I've done a lot of these projects, and I've had the opportunity to look at a lot of co-solar projects that pair with wind generation. And basically what that does is kind of produce more of a baseload versus variable load on those assets. And then as far as the only generating enough power for 60% of Atlas's power, yes, in the annual consumption, but Atlas would also be looking at getting power from other resources. You know, really, they're only looking at 75 megawatts of purchase during the day at most. They would have to then buy, you know, or have power purchase agreements with other entities. As far as the snow, when I've modeled these, especially in Montana's climate, there is some loss directly after snowstorms. Typically, given the angle that we see on these panels, they shed snow. The snow doesn't stay on them. And this, usually this loss, when we look at a soiling standpoint from energy, it's about a 7% loss that we factor in those winter months for snow loss. As far as the water usage and cleaning, so it really varies. And it's really hard to take what one place uses as far as cleaning panels versus what we're going to do here. I'd like to say that, yes, panels do require to be cleaned two times a year if you're in an area that doesn't get either snow or rain. I've done projects all over the world. I've done stuff in Kigali in Africa where, you know, super low angle on the panels, and they would collect a ton of dirt. And so we were having to try to come up with ways of cleaning that. But in Montana, the systems I've done over in Washington, everything's at a steep enough angle where it has a self-cleaning property when it snow collects on there or when it's raining. We actually, you know, so far, all the stuff that I've done in Montana, we've never actually even cleaned the arrays. We have an array on the building in Stockman Bank that we, I don't think they even clean that. The, some of the utility scale stuff that I talked about over in Washington, it's not being cleaned. And then even, even though we're not cleaning it, I will just say that when these systems are clean, the manufacturers really recommend that you don't use any detergents. It's actually really bad for the panels. The best way of cleaning that, the manufacturer that we're using recommends water with a brush. As far as I did, I was kind of wishy-washy on the disposal and also the panels and how many are broken. And the reason for that is I've had the opportunity to design and oversee, you know, over 10 megawatts of solar already. And out of all that, I've never had an issue with panels. I know that it's probably there, but I just can't speak from my own knowledge. I did, while I was sitting down, I did look, Enrail did a study in 2017, so National Renewable Energy Lab out of Colorado. And they looked at panels, and they found a five out of 10,000 failure rate. So 0.05% failure rate on those panels. So seeing as I've only probably seen, you know, 100,000 panels in my life being installed, like, probably why I don't see a whole lot of that. And then as far as broken panels, they also had a hailstorm go through, and they lost one out of the 3,168 panels on their building that was taken out by hail. They were reporting over an inch in diameter hail strikes there. And so that was about a 0.02% loss there. So it's possible, but, you know, from my experience, and that's kind of what I like to base stuff on, is almost my personal experience, and I just haven't seen a lot of failure rates. I'm not saying that it's not possible and that we're going to have to find a way of disposing those. It's just, in my experience, it's been really limited, the amount of failures that we see. The other question that was brought up is the price of power and if it was going to grow or be like Texas where we have, you know, where they went through that winter storm and had $8,000 utility bills. I will say that Montana is a regulated utility service. So everything that the utility goes through is through the Public Service Commission unless it's an electrical co-op. The Public Service Commission's there to protect individuals and making sure that they aren't price gouged. Texas is different. Texas is an unregulated utility market where the utilities are able to set whatever price they want at any given time that they want, if they choose to do so. So it's kind of a different scenario than what we see here. And then as far as the site in Richland, yeah, that is only a 20-acre site. We are looking at multiple other sites though that are, you know, up to 160 to 300 acres that are close to residential areas. So, you know, this is kind of coming again from my experience that I like to talk to. And so, you know, it's kind of what I'm basing that off of. You know, Richland, I feel like, is a decent one just because it's very operational right now and kind of is one to look at. So I think that's kind of it for the addressing some of the technical comments.
Couple more things I wanted to address. One item that was brought up that we failed to address previously was the noise at Atlas Power from that existing facility that's there and from the ventilation that's required. It's already been reduced. We spoke with multiple landowners just because of the alternative processors that are in that existing facility. That's already been reduced. And then I want to make sure I point out with that, the building expansions that we're talking about, we've designed those buildings that don't require additional ventilation beyond the fans that are in the processors. Basically, those processors will be able to move the air through the building. So even though Atlas Power might expand, the associated noise will not because of that. The next thing I want to point out, Ashley Powell, our Corporate Sustainability Director, works actually quite a bit with Google. And if you Google, the Google's Corporation, their sustainability goals, a couple of things I want to highlight that highlights why this project might attract that high tech that we're talking about. They, and I'm just going to quote it from them, "Our 100% renewable match was only an interim solution, and the urgency of the climate change demands a bigger and bolder vision. That's why we've announced a first-of-its-kind target to achieve 24/7 carbon-free energy by 2030." They, these companies are not doing further development at this phase that, or partnering with data centers at this phase without it being 100% renewable. And the question comes up, how does that happen? We know that the diurnal nature of solar and of wind. And I want to just point out, they're to the point where they're starting it to look at how they shift the operation of their data centers to match the renewable energy generation. So while we've, while we're addressing all these things, I just want to point out that, and Google's taking the lead, but it's the Amazons, it's the Dells, it's the other big corporations, these high-tech corporations that they're, this is where they're going. They're not, they are not developing new facilities that aren't, in this case, 100% renewable at this point. So with that, I'll finish up and turn it over to Rick. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Chairman, other members of the council. Yeah, we heard a lot tonight, and I was moved by the landowners that have a lot invested in their homes, invested in their lives, and invested in the community. We've got a little bit of work to do with that. And one of the reasons I'm on this job, my portion of this is called derisking. I'm not going to finance the $250 million. We have people lined up to do that. But in order to get that financing successfully, the project has to be derisked. And one of the risks is we're sitting in front of this committee, and it's a good thing because it really sharpens our pencil in a lot of different areas of evaluating this and derisking this project. If this project does not make it through this process here with this council on zoning, then the project is dead. We've invested a lot in it. However, the landowners, we're going to have to, I was moved. A lot of the hypotheses and the Googling and stuff, I mean, it is what it is. We're going to get that. Everybody's going to get it. But the people who actually have the homes that look at a value, a decrease in value, if that's legitimate and if that's the way they feel, or if they're losing showings on their homes, and I think that's something that we need to step in and try to help them with, and I'm willing to do that. My company's one of those companies, we've been around. I've made a lot of money in the last 10 years, and I've spent a lot looking for better solutions. My philosophy is really the more you give, the more you get back. I'm the guy that was in Anaconda, and I saw a bunch of kids with, didn't have coats, hats, gloves for the winter. So I said K through 12, go buy them all coats, hats, and gloves. That's a fact. That's what I do. When the data center went down, because one of the partners, Mr. Washington, went to jail for a Ponzi scheme, I bankrolled that place. Every single, there's 32 employees I carried for months until we got it into a federal court in front of Honorable Judge Brian Morris. A receiver was appointed, Jerry Lynch out of Butte, and Jerry and I worked hand-in-hand. My company was appointed by the federal court to actually marshal assets with magistrate. My company was appointed by the federal court to actually marshal assets with Magistrate Judge Lynch. And we pulled this thing through, we, and one of our biggest premises and one of my biggest problems was, we got to do this for Butte. We got to get this thing back running again. We can't build something. I had extensive talks with Northwest Energy. No matter whether the facility was shut down or not, it was a $300,000 bill that we committed. We committed to pay the bill, to keep that transmission contract alive and see this thing through, through until it started. We succeeded. So we've got some legs in this, and we've got a longstanding reputation. There has been a lot of corporations that come and go. A lot of people come in, say they're going to do things. I've read newspaper articles, we're bringing 500 megawatts a day to the area. It's, it's not possible. I know the grid as well as anybody. I've been at that Northwest Energy building probably as much as anyone. I was up there on this project recently, talking to them about what do we have to do, what's the next thing we have to do as far as studies and, and I'm very in tune with all that. Our company, I've spent probably $7 million de-risking the SLAG project, but I could never get transmission to it. That's the problem. With all due respect to the gentleman and his figures on energy and energy prices, that's what I do daily. Today, I was late getting here because I'm dealing with energy. We're paying $500 a megawatt today for energy. California has curtailed the energy. Really, the price point that everybody wants to host at or even come in is four and a half cents a kilowatt hour, which is, you know, 45 bucks a megawatt. But what you're not hearing on these $2 energy or $25 energy, Mid-C Energy, is it costs $4.75 a megawatt to get here, and then once it gets here, it's another $7.80 for the tariffs for Northwest Energy. So I, we understand energy well. Is the benefit to this great for us? Absolutely. Are we going to take all our energy from them? No. I mean, there's going to have to still maintain contracts. We elected not to do batteries because batteries kill the projects financially. Are the projects worth something? Are they worthless to build? Do they make sense financially? Absolutely. They sell for $1.1 to $1.2 million a megawatt to pension programs. Are we going to sell it to a pension program? No. But do they like them? Yeah, because they're predominantly an 8% to 14% return, but it's, the ROI on them is 14, 15 years. We tie the data to it, you pay them off in three, four years, what's the benefit to the public? The benefit to the public is lower cost energy. That's the secret sauce. That's what we're trying to do over east for Montana. I care about Montana. Montana's my, I don't, what goes on in Oregon, Seattle, I don't, that's not my concern. This state, I'm born and raised here, my great-grandfather packed a car of clothes from here to Anaconda, Joseph Thomas, Thomas Clothing, that's my family, that's my grandma. My grandma Florence was George Thomas's sister. So I've spent numerous, we fought to come here, we wanted to come to Butte all the time for Easters and Thanksgivings. I've seen what's going on here. I'm passionate about Butte, I'm passionate about the people, employing people, making sure that these projects are right. So in de-risking, I was working with Dylan when he was, wasn't, wasn't with, with the county on investigating the SLAG project back in 2014. You know, I was trying to figure a way to do something with that project. I funded countless research up at Montana Tech, you know, so are we concerned about this community? Do we want this to work? That's why Cushing-Tarrell was hired. That's why I care about the landowners and their houses. What about us? What about what we have to look at? Well, I'm probably going to employ Cushing-Taylor, somebody to go stand at their porches, look out over their backyards and say, this is what it's going to look like. And if they say they can't stand what it's looking like, then let's find them someplace else. Let's give them that money that they've been looking for, for their house. That's my commitment to this project. This project is important for Butte, it's important for Montana, and that's why we're here. Cushing-Tarrell, Montana Company, Electrical Consultants, Inc., Montana Company, Peterson Electric, Montana, Barnard Construction, Montana Company, pledge to use, this labor pool comes first. All the union, all the unions that I've met with, we've pledged around, around the spectrum, whether it's iron, whether it's electrical, they are going to be employed with Barnard, Peterson, Fortune Construction, H&amp;H Construction, S&amp;N Concrete, O'Keefe Drilling, O'Keefe's going to go out there. O'Keefe has actually perfected and refined a way to go out there with very little impact to the area, drill a ground screw in, move on to the next one, rather than drill it, fill it, fill it with concrete. I mean, there's just a lot that's gone into this that I'm relying on this local talent. The name of the auto, we buy our auto, we buy autos here, parts, Northwest Energy tariff rates. If in fact we get on 300 megawatts, the tariff rates for 300 megawatts are going to go to Northwest Energy. Montana Tech, we support them, the Highland College Education, the Copper King, ancillary restaurants, the job service, union labor, I think that I've already mentioned it, permit revenue for the county, creating the tax base. Let's talk about that in a minute. We're spending a million seven, a million eight in property taxes out there, and just on property, and then they get the break through the TED, but it still stays within local development. This is a $250 million project. What do you think that one's going to praise out at? Atlas is going to pale by comparison to the tax base on this. There's no way you can get around the capital exposure of that process versus John, the, the land was, I don't know what it sells for, $3,000, $4,000 an acre. I mean, you take a look at that value in that project now at $250 million, that's a huge thing. My, my, my subject of, of, my really passion is children, kids. I'm 56 years old, I got a two-year-old and I got a four-year-old. How'd that happen? Okay? Well, schooling, education, kindergarten, so the, the mill levies on this. I mean, we want to make sure that this money, we're not going to argue with money going to the right places in Butte. Butte needs it. Butte's the community that supports these projects. I mean, Missoula, if we tried to do it, Missoula, 150 reasons why not to do it, and half of them wouldn't make any sense. This is the town with the number one in the license plates for a reason. It started out the biggest, most productive town, and it's going to finish off that way. Kevin and I are passionate about it. I mean, his dad's done a great job with the mine, but you know what? It needs to continue. So my commitment, our team's commitment to excellence and to addressing the concerns of the people are a big deal to me. And anybody who knows me can't say a different word about it. I care about every single thing that these guys have talked about tonight. We're not turning our nose up about it, it's not about money. If it doesn't work for the people, and if it doesn't work for Butte, we're not going to do the project. I think it will. And we got people lined up to do it, so, so that we can get out of here. And any notion that you guys don't do your job, I tend to differ. This is impressive, 1215. So thank you for your time. Any further questions, please ask them. For the residents that have concerns about the value of their homes that you get with us, let's have separate forums, let's take them out there, let's look at their problems and, and, and if they're valid, and which I think they are, I mean, that's their home, that's what they have to look at. Let's, let's say, hey, look at a model, this is what you're going to look at. I think we can do that. We've got the technology to sit them down in a virtual reality situation, say, this is what you're going to look at. Does it look like a lake out there, or does it look like cheap housing? I mean, let's, let's let them make the decision, and if we can help them get into a different location, into a different house, I'm going to make that commitment to those people. There's not that, there's 20 people out there that, you know, have a legitimate gripe, and I'd probably sit with them and agree with them, you know? So that's my commitment to this town, that's my commitment to this zoning board, and I've got a great team, a bunch of honest people. This isn't Bechtel, some big Fortune 500 company standing in front of you. This is a, a medium-sized company that, you know, cares about what he's doing and, and is funding this thing to de-risk a program that I think's going to benefit this community. So having said that, thank you for your time, and I really appreciate you sitting here until this time of night. This is an important project and an important, an important move for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The rebuttal is concluded. At this point, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting with the exception that Mr. Peoples and Mr. Yates will be able to submit their comments if they have them to the planning staff by tomorrow. Otherwise, the public portion of the meeting is concluded. With regard to our decision, we've got a lot to think about. Section 17-38160 requires that we get our decision made within 60 days. I'm confident that we'll be sooner than that, but who knows? But we will get a decision and consider all of the evidence, all of the comments that have been submitted to us tonight, and I thank you people also for staying here till the next day. Thank you.